We'll move to order the planning commission for November twelfth, twenty twenty four. And um ask to call the board, please.
Mister Moore?
Here.
Mister Murray?
Here.
Mister Claiborne?
Here.
Mister Missile?
Here.
Mister Karasana?
Here.
Mister Bivens is absent. And Miss Boehoek is absent.
Great, thank you. Um and this is the work session for CPA twenty twenty one dash two A C forty four D A land use actions. You have the the staff report, I guess, and turn it over to the previous staff.
Thank you so much. Uh for making our presentations. See. Sorry, I can say that at the end.
All right, well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Tori Kinalopoulos. I'm a principal planner on the long range planning team. And I will be giving the presentation on development areas land use for the comprehensive plan update focused on the actions. So we'll start off with a quick overview of the board meeting that was on November sixth. Um and then talk about the objectives for the development area land use chapter. And then walk through the actions that are focused on today's discussion topics that were included in the memo to the planning commission. And then provide a brief overview of the upcoming schedule.
Tori, is anyone able to go full screen on that or is it not?
Um yeah, let me try. Sure. Okay.
If you need to.
No, it's okay. I'm good.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, totally fine. Um so to start off with a quick recap of the board's work session last week. Uh which was on the development area land use policies. And that was the board work session that corresponded with the planning commission work session that was on October twenty second. So talking about the future land use map and the activity centers. And the board was also generally supportive of accessory dwelling units with the right performance standards. Um in the zoning modernization update, but then also had mixed feedback on whether they should be allowed by. Require a legislative review. Uh the board had a concern for the number of proposed activities given the potential oversaturation of retail. Um and how much investment might be needed to support any given center. And then they also asked us to. Look potential incentives for redevelopment and encouraging activity centers. And then the board was also like the commission of the future. Um to distinguish between area. For the accessible open versus private. Similar to how Croze and Pantaps uh map those green areas. And then was also supportive of raising the lower end of the residential density recommendation for community mixed use to twelve units an acre instead of six units an acre. So today's topics are focused on the goal statement objectives and especially the acts. So those are the last three pages. Development areas chapter. Um as I mentioned, the commission discussed the other topics during the previous work session along with the board. And then we have made some updates to the objectives since phase two, which I'll talk a little bit more about. And then after this work session and the corresponding board work session on actions, which is next Wednesday, go ahead and update the full chapter. So both the policies and the actions and then reshare that again with the full comp plan document. So we have several topics that we're looking for feedback actually today. Uh and those were included in the commission's memo and they're kind of somewhere reorganized here. Overall. Uh topic of efficient use of development areas land and then balance protecting the natural environment. So I also wanted to note that we had planned to discuss parking requirements in more detail in the transportation chapter, but decided. Discussion better fit within the development area land use chapter. So we'll be talking more about that today. Um have some potential recommendations to incorporate as well. Uh since the chapter that we shared with you all so far is more focused on parking related to just city centers, not the development areas overall. And then also talking through the balance of using development areas land efficiently, but also protecting the natural environment. Um big community priority we've heard is tree coverage. We wanted to. Talk about that if anything is missing. So this slide probably looks familiar, so I'll go through pretty quickly, but just. Matter of how we got here and how we've been developing the chapters. We of course include community input and planning commission and board direction and then work with a variety of staff and partner agencies across the county. Uh see what should be carried forward from the twenty fifteen plan and then looking at relevant data and best practices. So each chapter has a goal statement, objectives and actions. Uh the goal statement is a vision for what we want our community to be like. And previously there were goals for development area land use that's been consolidated into one goal statement. The objectives are the targets or what we're trying to achieve. They should be measurable. So we did. Objectives from phase two to make sure that they they all measurable and then made some of them into actions. Since they seem to fit better at that level of detail. And then the actions are how we implement the comp plan to meet objectives. So this is a summary of the goal for the development chapter, which reflects the community input and priorities we've heard to date. Uh having thrive thriving walkable and mixed use places with a variety of housing types, connections with multimodal transportation. Tree coverage and protected natural areas and then encouraging redevelopment infill and adaptive reuse. And these are the four objectives that we are looking to achieve with this chapter. Uh so we want to make sure that our actions are focused on implementing at least one of these or more. And that includes increasing infill, higher density development, adaptive reuse and redevelopment. Increasing the number of jobs and housing units and activity and employment centers. Investing in existing neighborhoods, which overlaps a lot with other chapters as well, including parks. And then increasing tree coverage in the development areas, prioritizing areas that have a lesser tree coverage than average across the county. So this is a summary of the actions that we're especially looking for feedback on today. Um it includes incentives for redevelopment in activity centers, reforming parking requirements, site design. And then tree coverage and tree replacement. And then just wanted to include a news story from today that highlights what some of this tree replacement could look like in action. And then this is a summary of some of the changes from the. Twenty fifteen plan, starting with the policies. So we went from twelve neighborhood model principles to four community design guidelines. Went from having different land use categories in all of the area plans to the standard set of land use categories that you all saw. Reducing the number of activity centers and having a hierarchy of standard place types. And then a more broad approach of focusing mixed use and commercial activity within those centers. Instead of having every single rezoning that comes in, having to provide a mix of uses. And then also recommending that density be changed uh to gross density for residential density calculations. And then for the actions, a greater emphasis on investing in existing neighborhoods. And as mentioned, that has a lot of overlap with other chapters that you all will see, um including parks. A greater focus on replacing tree coverage, more strongly encouraging infill. Um and then not including actions that have already been completed, ones that are already requirements. And then just noting several actions are now in other planned chapters. Uh one example would be urban agriculture will be in the resilient community chapter. So wanted to provide some background and context before we talk more about efficient use of land in the development areas. So of course there are a lot of negative effects that can come from having too much parking, including increased impervious surface, the heat island effect and stormwater. Taking up space that could be used for other uses like buildings, um potentially having tear downs of historic buildings to make room for parking. Um and breaking up walkability through sites. So we've heard from, I think, the commission and the board to look at changing parking requirements, especially for non residential uses. And more allowing these types of non residential uses to propose how much parking they think they actually need. Um instead of including a, you know, stringent minimum requirement. Uh this could also benefit businesses that want to expand that don't have space to construct how much parking, you know, potentially could be required. So there's a few local examples of current parking requirements that are included here. These are kind of, you know, some of the more fun ones. But just noting that across the U S, a lot of localities are updating their parking requirements. A lot of them have been in place for many years or decades. Um and could probably, you know, be updated to be a little bit more reasonable. Um and also a lot of places don't distinguish between different locations throughout their locality. So they might have the same parking requirements in a walkable downtown area as well as in a suburban area. So there are also some alternatives that we currently allow in the zoning ordinance like shared parking or transportation demand management. Uh like reduced parking by transit and carpooling. So we could expand on some of those alternatives as well.
Just all our questions to you?
I think so, but if there's.
I get it.
Okay. If that's okay.
Yeah.
Um so these are some of the opportunities for parking reform. Uh the parking maximums are already included in this chapter. But as I mentioned, we were looking to cover these in transportation and then thought they would fit better um in site design for the development area land use chapter. So these are some additional ones that we could look at, like requiring shared parking in activity centers. Having multimodal transportation infrastructure in exchange for less parking, bike parking requirements. And then having better uh design requirements for safe pedestrian walkability throughout parking areas. Utilized spaces for seven hundred thousand. And the report noted um that a lot of those best suited sites were places uh that had lost anchor retail, were not being well maintained. Or were in areas that had too much retail. So, you know, these are sites that we hear a lot about and the county is having good potential for redevelopment. And they definitely do, but there's uh both challenges and opportunities to these sites. Uh some of the challenges, they might need rezonings, which creates some time and uncertainty. Sites have to be large enough to accommodate, you know, construction and staging equipment. And of course, it's typically more expensive than just doing a greenfield development that never had any infrastructure. And then these can be in areas that don't require disrupting existing businesses and structures with infill. Um if that can be created to kind of replace some of that surface parking and making it more walkable. And then also there can be some interesting site design, um like the five over one building that's shown where you have uh one floor of parking underneath and then five stories above. But that does require a lot of density to actually pan out for development. Um the stone field apartments that were recently finished as one example, if you just look at the density of that site, not across all of Stonefield, but just on the one parcel it's on. It's about ninety two units per acre. So it's pretty dense. And then we did a quick analysis of um about how much surface parking is in activity centers today. And we looked at activity centers that don't already have an approved development or are not already building out. And it's about a quarter of the land um in activity centers that have that development potential that's currently used for surface parking. And then as noted in the Rio twenty nine small area plan, that has a significant amount of surface parking today. Um at least at the time that the analysis was done, it was about forty percent. So as mentioned, we wanted to also talk about incentives for redevelopment in centers. Um there's action one point six in the chapter that talks about establishing incentives and it lists. Including uh water and sewer connections and structured parking, but there's some other potential incentives listed up here. Um and then we would appreciate hearing from you all on what other incentives we might want to consider for encouraging redevelopment in centers. And then uh one of the biggest challenges, of course, with this chapter is uh balancing using land efficiently in the development areas to protect the rural area. But also making sure there's a high quality of life and that we have resilient communities within the development areas. So we talked about parking reform and why that's important and can help with efficient use of land. Um there's also a lot of other benefits for uh replacing tree coverage and some of the other topics that we'll cover um in this section. Including for ecosystem services, which is kind of a fancy way of saying the benefits. Um that are provided to people in the natural environment by nature, such as the benefits shown from tree coverage here, including shade and removing carbon dioxide. So trees have also been shown to uh increase retail sales when they're added to commercial areas. So a lot of good reasons to prioritize those. And then within the chapter, there's recommendations for replanting in areas with lower than average coverage. And then protecting um groves or replacing groves of trees, um especially in important areas like along stream buffers. So a couple of other topics related to um the natural environment and environmental stewardship in this chapter, lighting, which we hear a lot about. Again, with the trying to balance um the dark skies, but also having safe environments for both pedestrians and bicyclists and drivers. Um throughout these more urban environments. And then green infrastructure and open space like amenity oriented lots, um having native ecosystems with community facilities and on public properties. And then um street design and public realm standards within activity centers. There are also a lot of um overlapping recommendations that are included in a couple of the other chapters, including environmental stewardship and resilient community. So just a quick overview of the upcoming and completed schedule. So as mentioned for development areas land use. We completed talking about the policies, at least in this phase. And then today and at the board next week, talking about the goal objectives and actions. And then next week, we also start to move into the rural area land use chapter. So the planning. Mission meeting Tuesday will be focused on rural areas policies and ten will be focused more actions. And the board, they'll talk about the entire chapter on January eighth.
That's not true. Is it uh is it six? The ten. Is it four?
You're good. Um the screen is. It's to be set at the moment, but that's a little bit great. Um oh. So as a quick reminder, these are the topics that we're especially looking for feedback on today. So using land efficiently in the lens of parking requirements, incentives. And then protecting the natural environment. And then if anything's missing. So with that, I'll stop for questions and comments and discussion. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. It's um um anybody wanna pick us up with questions? So um I know that we discussed um the part of requirements for non residential. What is the, what is the current part of requirements for residential? How many spaces are required um for non residential?
It's a good question. I think it depends for apartments on the um total number of apartments. And then I think um it's like about uh one space per one bedroom. And then for single family, I think it's two spaces per unit.
Good questions?
What is, so I'm thinking about the places I visit, we're talking about right sizing parking and that stat that you showed, I think it's at twenty five percent. Of the land um that is, has potential for redevelopment is dedicated to asphalt. So we talk about right size and parking. I think of, if I go to Whole Foods, that feels like it's right size. Like it's hard to find parking there. But if I go to Giant, I look at Pantaps, I go to Giant or Food Lion right by my house. There's a million open spots. And so you talk a little bit about like, what are the re. The requirement, the parking allocation requirements for like those strip malls or grocery, right? Versus like, I guess what we get to, why is Whole Foods different than Giant? Is it just a happiness spot? Or is the Whole Foods do something to say, hey, I want right size of parking. So when you go, it really feels like it's. As versus to see a basketball. Does that make sense? It's kind of scattered, but yeah.
I think it also partly depends on um if places did shared parking or if it ended up all getting added together. So for some commercial areas, you know, if they just did their parking requirements based on each individual store and business. And then it just all got added together. It does kind of create that sea of parking. Whereas if they were able to do shared requirements or get a reduction, it does make it feel, you know, more right sized.
Well, it is.
And that too.
It is.
Yeah. So. Probably.
Yeah, I I scratch that.
Oh. It's a good, it's a good point. Yeah.
There are, yeah.
Well, that, okay, that's a, that's a good idea, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I think just in general.
We talked about, Mike, well, you didn't, but we have before talking about micro transit. And that was a pilot program at Pantaps. Um you talk a little bit about if you know how that's performing or the plans to expand that, which might alleviate the need to have a car or two cars, as you say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So um apparently it's going quite well there. Uh that we should, we have Kevin here to talk a little bit about the particulars. What's going on with transit? Obviously, when we get to the transit chapter, transportation chapter, you know, that's certainly something. We talk about transit strategies to um. Employ and maybe better use transit in our community. That may be a good option. I, in short, it's, I think. We're pleased with it. I can't point you numbers off my head, unfortunately.
Anybody else? Questions?
Thanks, Tori, for your presentation. So yeah, a couple of questions around parking. Um you look, you mentioned that you've looked at several different municipalities in Oregon dealing with it. Um can you tell us what, which ones you're looking at? I mean, obviously the counties. We don't have the plans that are even in the city and. Have different policies to say. Their vast transit, it's it's more contained, it's easier to deal with than than for us. So just interested in who are you looking at? I mean, obviously there are, well, great examples there. I'm not sure how you get to eliminating parking requirements. So maybe that's the question I have is how you have reductions to eliminate. You get to the thing. Yeah.
Yeah, and to clarify that one, I think as far as eliminating parking requirements, it would probably be only in regional activity centers. Where it would be, you know, the density where that might be feasible and there could be a lot more shared parking, a lot more walkability. I don't, that probably wouldn't be feasible, just, you know, across the board.
I'm just reading, pardon? Parking not considered.
Hmm.
Think, well, we're speaking, um which we're comp plan level as a place, we're zoning, we're eventually get ourselves towards. And at that point, we really should be talking about, hey, what city is comparable? What are they using for that rate for? Five hundred, you know, square feet of commercial or something like that.
Okay, I, so you have a little bit of that. For Nick, and I mean, you might be looking at something, nothing that you're diving in as a, as a possible. Yeah, I think that's gonna be the key is, you know, important. It's really identifying. Many of these values that are comparable.
Yeah.
To us, where. We don't have the benefit of having. But we do have some access, maybe some. Some things that are beginning to, like the micro. And so forth, that are beginning to develop, but we're not there yet. Um so it's almost an expansion phase and hopefully we're gonna improve, but how do you, how does our parking policy make it? And we can, we can, yeah, and again, there are great examples out there. Um. I'm thinking of two of the counties, the county that I live in, that I've been so much larger.
I'm looking at the, looking at the change in the park, I'm pretty sure of the change in the policies.
Uh I had a question a little bit on, a couple, well, just sort of general about the objectives and actions. Is it, these are in. Particular priority order or are they just kind of happening all the way in that way? Uh we look at the, the end of um attachment beam, we're acting one point one, the two, one, three, one point four.
Hmm.
Um are those sort of like, we're gonna hit one point one first, one point six.
More a list, not prioritized.
Just to check.
It's a good question.
Point six feels like a big one.
Right.
For example. Um, all right. Uh and then I also had a question about um. The. Incentives for uh redevelopment or higher density in the activities, and particularly when it comes to like a, like a parking structure. Um have we talked with owners and developers about that at all yet? Or is it still kind of hyperbolic?
We have discussions about uh. A the challenge, we've heard a lot about the challenges they face. That's been a primary part of the discussion. There have been some discussions, I understand. Um. Essentially. We made incentives, but nothing's come.
Okay.
For parking structures themselves.
Hmm.
Oh, for example, um in the uh. The Barnes lumber redevelopment project in Croze, there is a TIF there to help. The redevelopment or that property and the creation of a plaza.
Uh huh.
So it's, Kenny does have that track record.
True, true. Uh, yeah, the reason I was asking was just like, like, do we, if we've talked with the, the developers of some of these or the current owners of some of these. Shall we say uh underutilized commercial spaces? Um, do they have an interest in doing? And I guess um um. Thinking of one in particular near where I live, where from what I understand, the guy doesn't have any interest. Um and I don't know what. We'll move that forward. Uh but if all the developers have kind of, you know, been in conversation with this and they say this would be the thing that would help us, then, you know, let's get it.
It certainly represents a, a significant barrier.
Okay.
To getting up to that next level.
Yeah.
And I mean, there's a lot of just basic market. Um. Realities we're in.
Hmm.
Community, I really go onto that next level of density and certainly.
Yeah.
That's one of the barriers that one of.
Sure. Yeah. What other ones would you identify as key?
Incentives or barriers? Well, I mean, I think land prices are one for sure and have they gotten to a significant amount uh. To support that kind of of density.
Hmm.
And then the commercial market is in a strange state right now.
Sure. And some of those are outside our immediate local control. Yeah. Thank you.
Could we, uh, could we ask the commissioners to speak up a little, a little more for the online listeners?
It feels a little odd to project to Michael like two feet away from me, but yeah, I'll try. So I had a couple of thoughts and um comments a bit to start with. One was, uh, you know, when I look through these, when I look through the objectives and actions and the objective statements. Increase the use of infill, higher density development. Increase the number of jobs, invest in existing neighborhoods. And then there's increased tree coverage. He, I'm curious about the last one, that increase in tree coverage seems very specific. Whereas even here, you talk about balanced, efficient use of development areas, wildlife, environmental stewardship. I'm, I'm wondering, is there, how do I ask this question? Those resilience women to that. Is there? Is there room to think about how that objective was written to be a little bit more broad and more just specific? Wondering if that's helpful.
That's an interesting idea and I like that because I think, you know, you could think more. Yeah, but you know, on top of what kind of. That's, that's an example of another way of reading, it's not a tree. To include, include all kinds of habitats. Um vertical, you know, screening.
Yeah.
Um so there's lots of ways it can be done. It doesn't necessarily have to be true. Um, so there's lots of ways it can be done, it doesn't necessarily have to be true.
Agreed. Is there, so I guess my question is, is there a specific reason that you zeroed in on trees?
Um, I think part of the reason that we zeroed in on trees um was that there's uh kind of a similar recommendation in the climate action plan to really prioritize tree coverage um in the development areas, and especially because it comes up so much um through actual development and through community input. But I think it's a really good point that it could be more broad. Um, because as we kind of, you know, acknowledge and mention here, there's a lot of other environmental stewardship topics that could be woven into.
Yeah, and maybe it's, you know, as stated in the climate action plan and the resilience. You know, that, that kind of ties it back to other opportunities, green coverage and other opportunities.
Yes, yeah. That's, I mean, I agree, I agree with you both here. I wonder if it's, it's a matter of putting it into a broader category, but I do think that there is difference between green and green roofs and, and canopy loss is, is an issue. I know that, um, well, the university, I've taken several steps on how to deal with that. One, how to protect the canopy, because once you're, you're taking down trees, and yes, you're going to replace them, but that's going to take decades to get, to even take a note with trees. The term what is doing, your canopy loss, and the, and, and the advantage, or advantage, but, but the benefits to the environment that canopy has, we have to stop. Which is obviously, because they're different than other green, um, um, green opportunities, they're beneficial, like green roofs are beneficial, other beneficials are, whether there's a category within a power resilient, whether it's, you know, environmental stewardship, whatever the category is, then here are some things that are important within that. Uh, it could be some green roofs and looking at, you know, um, um, permanent pavers and a number of, of things that we do, tree canopy protection, which is one of them. I do think they're a little bit different.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, I think they're, they're kind of both important.
Both, both important, yeah.
And, and I think, but one of the big things that we're missing now, Mark County, that I'd like to see real specific rules, is I, I think when we are in the tree commission, very handy to be able to get, you know, the kind of citizen advice and continue input, not just around on tree preservation, but around proper maintenance and planting and, you know, trees. Because a lot of times, you know, you see these trees that just dropped into these, what the, the landscaping industry calls island's death. Um, you know, and they just shrivel and die, and then they drop in a new one once they die, you know.
They're going.
And, and so I, I really would love to see, you know, you know, establish some tree convention.
Okay, I think a brief on that for a second, I think what we, we also are talking about is, is the need for um maybe a more robust and modern public works department. We were starting to do some of that, we, we have sweeping beauty now, blessed, uh, and uh, um, we, we have a, a little bit more um proactive looking at, at some of the stormwater, you know, trying to, to improve some of those things, but um you know, for a long time, for many years, we've had a very sort of, I'm just thinking about like the Rio overpass, we put these planters in and plant the flowers and they all die. Right? Uh, and we don't have, you know, we haven't really had an apartment to do that uh for, and it's just now kind of starting, and I feel like that could be something where maybe some expertise could be helpful.
Think in the goal statement, you talk about neighborhoods being green and resilient. So that's sort of broader, and then it talks about tree coverage, protected natural features, energy efficient designs. So maybe just thinking about that objective, it's like a way to broaden that. The other thing while we're, we're riffing, to use your word on trees, um, a couple of things that, that others know more about than I do, but Biophiliic Cities movement.
Well, it's a version of the same thing.
Or that, that's, yeah.
Something, I don't know how that, but I think there's grants actually even attached to that. There, I could be looked at.
Our, but.
Incentives there.
Yeah, I had that website already pulled up, where you talk about it, um, and there's a list of partner cities, um, including Arlington, um, Austin, um, London, and so I mean, I would, well, we can't show this to the internet, but you know, um, you guys can look at us, this up, and I would love to see us join as a partner city. We've discussed this in Nashville, here, several times, um, and we'll see that as cool, but this, this chapter, third anniversary. And we're tired by, more recently.
I think we have the professor who coined the term biophiliic, and he's here with you guys, so. Um, he's, and, and I, more, there's a couple of folks with the architecture school, we're talking to city already about this, and asked if they could talk to us as well, so that might be a good opportunity. Um, the other thing is old growth forest, I think that's probably more applicable to maybe rural areas, but that's another area that you need to be thinking about, and that others have suggested that in the areas, how to preserve areas that can be called old growth forests, small tracts. That could be preserved for a moment.
Yeah, there are actually, um, if you look at your. Aerial photographs, moving back. So another thing I think a tree commission could potentially do is help identify some of those trees, and the champion trees, specimen trees. You don't have a lot in our Mark County, but I think particularly as we develop and as we start, I think, we will have trees that are special or have community importance, that I think that having, having records of those things, um, I think that's important as part of, you know, growing up as communities.
Uh, the other things that I had are less questions and more comments, so you guys. Anybody wants to share comments?
Do you mind, part of the tree stuff, we can leave that. It's just interesting, I think one of the things that we've been talking about a little bit is, uh, obviously, we'll be able to pick up some of the stuff from resilient community stuff, it is a climate change, a heat island, uh, this thing.
Yeah.
Um, and I guess one of the things that really, especially in the environmental stewardship, is a heavy emphasis, especially in the of like how we treat this question, um, the development area versus the rural area, with the development area having a balance, sort of the need to also efficiently be able to use the um development area, which sometimes you, you may have to cut trees or, you know, grow trees to be able to achieve that goal too. But trying to sort of still prioritize uh canopy coverage associated with streams, critical slope systems, stream. So I think, um, as I hear you all talk, one of the questions I sort of have is, where do you stand? What is your, whose your counsel on? The balance of the can sufficiently as we can, and the preservation of trees.
Um, so. Yeah, so I think the, the the plus slash minus i- is that our develop, development areas um have a lot of basis issues. Um, I think people don't fully, you know, grasp when they look across the landscape, um, how much of it is like escaped Bradford pear and um Atlantis and other like trash, you know, um, and these could, should frankly be removed. So the number of actual native species that need to be preserved in our development areas is pretty small. Uh, there are, um, as I said, specimen trees or specific areas where there are things of note that I think we should take a look at. Um, and that doesn't mean you can't develop those spaces, but they should be taken into consideration um as one of the factors, you know, when we, you know, talked about wanting those areas. Um, you know, one area I think about is over near Funk, there's a nice colony of umbrella. Which is a very unusual tree, particularly next to the development area. Um, so that would be native species, for example, that we should think that, you know, as development occurs there. Um, you know, either preserving those umbrella managers, making sure that if, you know, they do get destroyed by the, that the same species gets planted back. Um, so I mean, I think things like that, that's how I would approach that, um, to focus on, you know, and say invasive removal.
Yeah, I think, I think it's part of that. I also think, you know, if you think about this, if I'm understanding your question, Michael, is how do we balance the need for density, the desire for tree canopy in the development area, and how does that compare to the rural?
Especially the preservation there of existing camp.
So one thing I mean, is looking at this, we was hitting one in rain right here. Um, I'd say about just a couple of things off top we had, one is, you know, we're, we're not cursed and blessed, but we have the benefit of and the challenge of some severe topography even in the development areas. Like existing topography, so vertical slopes and, you know, you name the percentage, just twenty-five percent or over, whatever it is, even fifteen and over creates a lot of challenges for developers. So are there places where we can, in the development area, look and say, yeah, they're not going to be developed ever anyway? Maybe it's floodplain. Maybe it's these, you know, those kinds of things that are already preserved, that are off the, the block, and kind of identify where that's on. And then if it's not a developer that's adding a tree canopy in those locations, maybe it's a, maybe it's the county that actually best in those areas, that are within the development areas to allow for developers to, you know, create more density, minimize some of the canopy, or more strategically developable areas.
I think this is also where this consultation on that, which grows, I know there's bills that are going, debate over that. So there, and then there are pluses and minuses, but I do think in the development area, as we talked about, just what you were saying, if you're gonna preserve these pretty much low extreme offers and areas that we're not gonna build on, but then are we gonna lose the opportunity to maximize what we can build for, for housing? You know, if we use that, then you're looking, right? Where if you use the growth, you can benefit of those, you can still, still protect the area that's to be protected, but allow for higher density, uh, you know, within the, the building footprint of, of all particular options. So again, there are pros and cons, and I can always want to argue why there's some, some, some such a problem with with using, using growth, but I do think for some benefits, and, and if we're looking to maximize our development area, you know, I do think that's positive, is a positive for the environment, it's a, you know, so you have to look at it. If you ask your question, I think a little bit more, more poignant on that. There is that balance, but as, as Fred was just saying, we can look at the areas that we're not gonna touch, and there's plenty of them around, um, then you could still maximize your buildable areas. And then when you talk about replacements, because we're gonna have trees, trees, you know, we have that in our guideline, we want to continue to promote that. Do it in a way, so I don't know, I don't believe, I know that, that, uh, Karen has talked about this in the past. I don't believe we've ever developed a robust planting guidelines.
Yeah.
And so, so you were talking about the zero now, when you put things back, let's put it back in a way that's gonna survive, and they actually are gonna, are gonna reach a size, a caliber and canopy that's gonna make a difference. Because it takes a while for that canopy to actually, you know, have any impact on the environment. Um, and if we don't let it ever get there, then, then why spend all this money? Um, and there are true and tried ways of doing that, the tree will, will survive.
Yeah, I agree, from colleagues, Mr. Barnes, I think it also emphasizes the importance of utilizing existing buildings and adaptive reuse, which would have less negative impacts on the site design, right? Um, and so just want to add that portion there also, since I think that's one of your questions, or at least I thought I read it somewhere. How do you incentivize that? I think that just magnifies the importance of it as well, so.
Well, I, I like that you already brought it, stepped into the, like, the grist versus neck. And, you know, when you're talking about the difference between rural area and development area, no. It's that balance of, in the rural area, let's say it's the philosophy should be do more. Um, and then, you know, and if we think about this in terms of, you know, you can almost draw continually, you know, as development occurs. Um, in the, in the rural area, the balance is protection. But as the number of people increases, you, you start, you, you go from protection to restoration um towards artificially created ecosystems versus naturally ecosystems. So you're creating ways to treat stormwater versus protecting the systems that, you know, have that storm. So, so I mean, in the rural area, I think that that density makes a lot more sense, and we should, you know, if, if there's you have a lot of stream buffers, a lot of critical slopes, you don't want to, you want to, you want to simply protect those areas as they are, you don't want to chunk in more houses and whatever is that. Um, but, you know, resency makes sense in the development areas, but I think um, where we've identified sensitive areas, I think they should be treated differently. If we've identified areas that we want to have as green space or areas next to waterways, or that we know are impaired waterways particularly, uh, we should try and limit the footprint. So, limit the footprint, but then, then release some of the other requirements and options like building height. Um, so that we can say, we don't care how high you go, but you need to be within this footprint. And I think that will result in much better development. Um, so you still get the same number of units, but not, um, you're being more sensitive to that.
Maybe just to give you some time.
That goes right into point two. And sorry, you actually had a, a slide that talked about. Now, when you pulled this out, um, it, can you talk a little bit more about, I mean, are these conversations that you the county has?
I think there's something we're hearing, as you talk about the development area chapter, or as you and the board supervisors talking about this. I think staff is following the lead of, of what board might want to do on this question.
Yeah, I just heard, oh, it's funny. This level set where this is coming from, this is where you remember, I know we have said, you know, some of these problems, some of these stuff, maybe we'll, 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 as well. So that's where that's coming from, this isn't coming from.
Yeah, not directly from the draw community, uh, I'm, I'm right in saying that, right? And not, staff isn't really trying to, I mean, I think we recognize that we've got this challenge, you were just asking me about a second ago. Um, so that's context.
I just to guess, I mean, one, one of the thoughts here is to thinking as a developer, you know, putting that hat on. Really simplifying it, there's incentives that have dollar signs, and there's incentives that don't have dollars. Like it's gonna cost money to do this, or this would just be a better practice and more efficient, they're full safe. It doesn't cost. So I think, thinking about these categories, I got, you know, a little bit of step to screen the consciousness came out. There, you know, there are things like time, which is money, but time processes, how do you get things done more quickly? So that a developer can bring their project to the market quicker, for things that are everybody. Now, you know, all this kind of thing, we're focusing on those, where that's building approvals, running process, uh, broadening on the categories, so once they, there's some flexibility built into that, so once they have X, I don't know, pick something like, like a neighborhood model district where you can do commercially, you can do pretty much whatever you want, you use right it in as a developer. You know, there's that, that opportunities, that opportunity, um. And, and then thinking about the items that would cost money, so public infrastructure connection, someone's gonna have to pay for that. And is that the county, or is that, you know, it's not the developer, who's paying? What is the quantification of that? Uh, I'm not sure about structured parking, really what that meant, or stormwater management, because structured parking is a whole heck of a lot more expensive. Ten times. So, like, does that mean that the county might participate in building structured parking to support larger developments, or what was the intent behind structured parking?
Again. Again, it's kind of like, I think we recognize this is a it's, it's a big topic, and for the reasons you just mentioned, it's very expensive.
Hmm.
Um, it's come up multiple times over the past several meetings we've had talking about the development area. And, you know, I, I think we're cognizant of its cost and, and of a you know, pretty significant change that would represent in the county, I don't think sta, I don't think we're we're not, we're not evangelizing the, the incentives for it, but
I guess.
We're sort of reacting to the discussions that are coming up, so.
Like, yeah, so, so, I mean, I think I've heard several of us, I think that brought up certain points, we, we look at the railroad, um, all area. Hard to imagine, you know, you build that out to how it was conceived, without some kind of structure part.
Hmm.
Uh, where you want to densify along, along the twenty-nine four door and one road, and then the opportunity is to build parking design. Proper parking design, that way, so you don't have to see a park everything in the pocket. You know, there's whole foods that more, we have, you see a parking, um, lots. And so by doing that in a district level or area, land level, you then consolidate your building up.
Right.
That parking, so it, it then allows you to have more density and more, more residential along the border that you want, so there's a lot of benefit, there would be a lot of benefit to. Um, to both the development community as well as the community of water. So how do you get there, how do you get where it's it's, um, public, um, you know, we. Initiative, uh, to try to get there. And target areas that like years, years to three centers that would really benefit. And and a lot of people benefit, you know, because there's certainly benefits in the development community, right, they're. Um, so. How we get there, I guess it's a graduation, you were the partner.
Yeah, I get the density benefit. Um, because what like the first lesson I learned about real estate was. Surface parking first, then structural parking above ground, then go below ground, look before we begin. So, so I don't understand how it's an incentive. For that's the, the developer has to pay that for tomorrow. For structural parking, because there there may, unless there's some other kind of.
I I don't know. I think we're talking about a county investment in that, in a sense, right, I mean, I that, well, at least when I read through this, I was thinking, oh, okay, so let's imagine the Rios model area plan. This is all hypothetical, this knowledge, none of the developers have said, yeah, we're up with that. But, uh, um, but that if the county were to build and operate a a structured parking facility. And that would then enable this other dense development around it that would be private, um, as long as Mark Brown's not involved. Uh, but, uh, anyway, um, the, uh. Yeah, I mean, like, like, could that actually work, you know, could we, could we invest in that proactively? I mean, otherwise, what year do we pass that small airplane, twenty fifteen, and we're going on a decade now, we're out of it all, we've got a home deep of.
So I think particularly about Commonwealth Square, right, not to pick on, but let's pick on Commonwealth Square. Um, so, that place it goes to. Um, there's, there's one or two things in there that people visit, but most mostly, that's just the. And we can't, I mean, obviously, it's up to the developer, we want to develop that space or not. But I think we can make it easier. Um, I think, um, after personally, I think offering tax income financing, I think is a good way to get there. Because we're not getting the additional revenue from redevelopment right now anyway, that's, that's not revenue we have. And we're never going to get it unless we get structured parking spaces. So putting on the table, so listen, if you remove some of this surface parking. Um, we'll offer you tax increment financing to make structured parking feasible. Um, and so I think that's certainly the baseline right there, and see if that gets us there, um, putting that on the table and offering that particularly. If they're willing to achieve some, some, um, performance based standards, we said criteria ahead of time. In terms of like what they would need to do to qualify for this, um, obviously reducing surface parking, um, improve, improve stormwater. Um, you know, if they can, if they could throw in a little bit of green space, once they put in that that parking, that'd be great. But it's important, important to note, we're getting nothing right now from this space, we're getting nothing from, you know, a mall square and. It was, I I was just over. Um, I've on can tops, and my wife and I were looking for a place where we could. Um, we could hike the old military trail, and. And there's this big, big parking lot, it's just totally empty, and and all these signs are saying like, don't park here ever. I was thinking like, this is crazy, like, we need parking for people to get this trail, because we. We actually wanted to get to the back of the trail. But here's this big parking lot, it's not even usable. And and that just seems like a a loss. I mean, if nothing else, I mean, I wonder if the city should lease some of these parking lots as commuter lots. Um, because then you're bringing people into these places that are, then they're like, oh. I'm parked here anyway, I just get, got home from from work. Oh, maybe I can pick some, pick up some groceries, or maybe I can do some shopping while I'm here, because my car is already here. So I mean, I think there's some opportunities like that to just, if nothing else, to. Actually use those lots. Yeah, I think we have structured parking is baseline. So you're like, so we're going to build a structure parking, you have to build in, so they did because they ran out of space to build. They want to use. On day research, right, start your part. A lot of different examples of that, um, one thing that I I think we needed to do, I may be wrong, but when we. Have done rezonating, that we want to have the options of structural parking, you have to do it in a structural experiment. Is there a way to just automatically say, you know, if you're going to develop this someday, we expect to be super successful. The reverse is automatically your structure parking. There's an opportunity, we're going to do the process. I think, I think another side of it too is these areas that we have, personally, currently zone commercial, I think this is true for Fashion Square Mall. Um, the, the question is, even if you want to retrofit housing into that area, you have to do a rezoning, we have to come before it's not being expensive process. We should allow that by rate, um, I think we should allow, if you're going to retrofit housing. I think there should be a condition, we can't just simply replace all the commercial with residential. Um, because that would just swing us in another direction, um, but I think if you're going to. You know, drop in housing that parking lot, that should be by right. Uh, and you know, without having to come for, you know, reason.
Honestly, and and I appreciate the the the. Talk about different kinds of incentives and how it could go, it seems like there could be a really simple way to do this, it's kind of in two point three here, the bigger two point three, looking at CIP funds. To support projects that support activities in their film, but like, I can see like, we use CIP funds to build a parking garage. In conjunction with a developer who's got a plan to build a new downtown at at, say, Fashion Square. You know, um, that would be like, it's, it's really funny though, to think like, can you imagine going and saying like. Our first priority for county funds is a billboard parking at the Fashion Square, but if it's in partnership with an actual feasible plan, that's going to bring. The goals we want and say are, then why not, that's what comes forward.
I think for me, the hard part is, I mean. You got to involve all of these incentives for people. And see what the result is, and I'm not criticizing the county or anybody, but the results. According to the developers, don't even come close to being able to close the gap between cost. So there's this, and the county's well, let's engage the development community, let's figure out what it is that they would like for incentives and see what happens. That was quantified into the number and then counting through the parts. So I just have a hard time seeing, not to be that that began here, but the hard time seeing. Um, how we're going to be able to create incentives that are going to cost the county money. Just doesn't feel like it's a priority. Maybe that's just me, but when we talk about affordable housing. Stations and funds that we can bring to that traditional toll. It's hard for me to see how we can. Re-channel funds that are just floating out there, something that's, uh, lower. That's, as I said, that's the benefit of tax income financing, because we're not getting that money now, we're never going to get that money. Um, unless redevelopment occurs in this space. Um, and so we're, we're actually losing, in my mind, losing. Of the development could be there, um, because we've not redeveloped those spaces, so I think putting that certain thing on the table, I think is. I mean, I I would, I must probably certainly be alone in this, but I still regret that we didn't pass, um. A improved surface fee, um, you know, if if only narrowly tailored to these large surface lots. I think having a little bit of stick along with the carrot wouldn't hurt. Um, but.
Well, I just wanted, I I I do think. There's, there are, there's, these issues are related. You can, if you can add to your density and affordability of building, if they don't. But it's been built, and maybe it's a combination, I'm not sure that it's all with county funds. But there are people that have to operate these garages, unless the county wants to get into the business. And they were part of it. Uh, so looking at opportunities with partners, how you can build these garages.
Yeah.
Now you, you're enabling denser development, which will have more affordable housing, more tax revenue. Uh, so, so I think they're not discollected, they're definitely weighted, so yes, how do you move money from one to the other, I guess, but it's. I think we can't separate, because there are.
That's great.
Well, yeah, exactly to your point, and I think, um, uh, if we could use our funds to very proactively invest in that kind of thing. It'll eventually pay for itself, right, that's collect. Um, but, uh, it would be very proactive, so yeah, I drive by Fashion Square Mall and that Rio twenty nine quarter every day. And, uh, and once in a while, when I'm kind of, you know, daydreaming a little bit, I can imagine, I can sort of like see. Like a, a, kind of like a downtown for our, you know, development area part of the county, um. Uh, the urban ring, you will, um, and, uh, uh, it's a nice thought, but it's not going to get there just by like. You know, a a tax break here and a tax break there, I mean, I think like some real proactive investments to make it happen. And it is a destination, so I think, you know, having parking is the thing that might be the incentive to do it, to actually very proactively do that. Um, in conjunction with, you know, a a developer's plan for robust redevelopment.
Oh, no, no, you got a hand, because then I actually want to change topics to a little thing, just to leave it.
Yeah, I have a question about staff's, um, perception of the viability of density and height bonuses and. I'm asking that question from posture of just seeing the proposals that have come by here, where we rarely. Hit the top line of density and in terms of height. I don't recall many times people asking for more height, if anything, it's like a step back over the thirty five foot level or whatever it is, right? But rarely do I see people beaten and begging for either of those, so I'm curious. Staff perception on the viability of that being incentive.
Yeah, and I think it will hopefully come up more too, as we get more of these kind of infill and smaller sites, because I think you're right when there's. You know, a lot of what we've had in the past of these kind of larger, you know, planned communities over kind of a significant area. But as we've started to see, you know, some of these kind of smaller, more infill sites come in with apartments, they have. Wanted to go somewhat, you know, higher and denser, and sometimes it doesn't pan out, um, you know, there's challenges with, you know, access and easements and things like that on some of these sites. But I think that's where we'll see it more.
Okay, so you do think it's viable, but mostly for infill?
Well, yeah, element is, and I've seen this at least two different large scale projects, where there was an outside developer who came in and solved them, we solved what we said we wanted. Had a very robust proposal, there's something that was very dense and. And had so much pushback. And we can't, we said, what's true, right, and then a local developer came here and just kind of did things, the things are always done.
Pushback.
Uh, uh, neighbors coming out, um, uh, you know, uh, uh, uh. Towards not being, we're not going for it, that's some years ago, you know, but, uh, um, I'm thinking about the one across from Dunmore, you know. Um, and then, you know, uh, we come back and we get something that's not being built out to anywhere near the the capacity, you know, okay. Um, so, you know, I I know we're all saying that the the density and height bonuses can be there, that we want that now, but like, it hasn't been that many. Said one thing and and as a county not actually done.
But what is any, I don't know, a little bit of this is probably tied to some state building code, but. All your building codes are something that can be looked at. In terms of increasing density. I mean, I just, the only reason I thought of that is some of the height restrictions are because they can do stick built.
Okay, yeah.
Wood versus wood.
And I don't. Yeah. But I don't know, there are other, there are ways that they can.
There is a, I think a task force that just started recently, uh, looking at, um, having fewer staircase requirements for some of those. Like kind of missing middle, smaller apartments.
Single staircases.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was light safety and stuff. Well, I, I wonder too, I mean, we talk about residential parking, the thing that occurs to me. Is, is I do think, you know, while we're not at the point where we can. Um, where people are, where everyone can, you know, bike or walk, um, to work. We'd have spaces in the backyard that is possible, and I lived in one of those spaces for a while. Um, you know, and I, I did run, walk and bike to work, particularly some of the areas that were right there where we touched on. Um, and so I wonder, um, I wonder about if there is a walkability index, and we could look at. You know, areas that have a high walkability index within our birth areas, and say, in those areas, we can drop the parking requirements. Um, because I I just wonder, like, you could, I could imagine, you know, the coming force and listen. We would build in for the housing complex, where people who are serious about like, our clients. They don't want cars, they, because there are people that, you know, they're like that, they say, they, they want to use public transportation, and they want to to walk, run and bike. They don't even need a car, um, can I build this? And I think we should, there should be spaces or ways that we can say yes to that. So, uh, just thinking about, again, we're good on time, incentives, are there any other incentives that are this year that? We haven't talked about?
Question, I guess, when I think of like economic development, they have like Virginia EDP. They have the the site ready, the readiness sites program, right, which is brainfield sites. Get it all set up in utilities and the ranking scale, is there anything that exists or like? No, no, like, existing buildings or anything like that where you can. I don't, I don't know if that's a stretch, but is there anything like to incentivize someone to? Use this lot to do X, Y, and Z, where we have the utilities ready for you or, um. You know. Someone like pad ready for a green site, build ready for an existing site.
You know, to your, to the tier system, tier, tier fours.
We think of like shopping malls and things like that that are vacant.
You zoning and maybe height density. To encourage building these centers, and I, I, I do think, you know, how many of these? Yeah, how many can feasibly tackle at one time, right, maybe there's. There's a handful, they say, these are the priority centers, and I don't want it to add another, where we have a lot of views, you know, and I think it might be a lot of them. You know. Maybe there's a handful that are just the priorities, and you just begin to focus on on these incentives and look at, and look at. How they can then supply, perhaps bringing, perhaps we have infrastructure already, something to be there, and maybe we can bring in some more. And then you can focus on on these, whether pad ready, whatever you want to call them, so that it would incentivize, um. Our density development, you know, to begin happening.
Yeah, maybe there's, there's intersection improvements that are needed, right, unless we have a sticking point, with intersection improvements or. There is a bus shelter, we'll go and put that in already, this is the things that kind of stir development.
I do believe that we're, you know, perhaps we're in the threshold, I don't know, we've talked about, so I, I think the incentive is for density and. And I notice it's something, I think, the back of something is certainly possible, maybe, might come away to develop. Yeah, I, my sense is that if you see it in the city, right, they're new zoning, they're now building, buildings that are ten stories tall. And. You're going to see more of that. I believe we're in the threshold now, and yes, we have seen four or five stories. It's don't feel, you're, you're going, you're seeing it now, maybe it's just trickling in, but there's going to be more of it. So we should be ready from a certain, no one gets standpoint, only standpoint, so we can. Make it happen, when they come to us to surface conversations, we have a path for it, that that spreads to the low, doesn't cost money. If we can expedite, you know, there was a pass trap for for these types of, that makes sense in certain areas.
Let's take a, just a quick. Check in with staff, are we answering your questions, we getting what you want us to get to?
Absolutely.
Maybe one suggestion, we have five minutes plus than fifteen, we're on stake the whole time, and what about if we? Just touch on parking requirements, we're kind of going in reverse order, and then. Spend some time just specifically on your goal, all objectives and actions, some of us may have some comments. So are there any more under reducing, eliminating parking requirements? Sorry, there's any other questions specifically to that? I just, I just said one more, um, a meeting I was at earlier today, um, for the show on the conservation gestures. We did provide an incentive, um, from previous surface movement, when people, on a small scale, they're bringing appropriate surface, and so there is a cost share payment. Um, which overall contributes to that, actually, you know, fund that is the stormwater conservation venture. But there's also shared state under the Chesapeake Bay Act. And it's, we have these programs to help, you know, for small residents, for one homeowner on there or one small business. It would be nice to upscale, um, upscale some of this, there's incentive to say like, listen, with previous service, I'm removing. Is several acres of previous surface, I would love to see that in semis, um, and maybe, you know. Maybe we could do that partnership with DEQ or, you know, or. I'll throw in one thing, and this is something that was said by many here, the, and it's not. Parking, and when we think about reducing parking, we have to also think about how do we handle.
And if, you know. Whether, like you said, because the city. We've mentioned the transportation side directly to parking reductions, things like that, I mean, that's, we're going to reduce parking. We got to figure out how we can get people around. The other thing is, you know, just thinking of like, just using multiple of example, where we have four town center buildings tied to each other and each one of them. Was built at four per thousand. You know, net, so eighty percent, right, for us, so those, we haven't seen it parking this hard. And I think it's for two reasons, one is because I think we reduced it from the last thing. But I think it's also how we use our buildings now. So, um, you know, whether it's more working from home, so there are not many people in it, or or the hopefully what's happening is. Repurposing some of those buildings and they're no longer office, but there may be lab. Right, or maybe even residential. Um, which allows you to kind of re-technical the marketplace. The other is, I don't know about. Think this is right, that the county doesn't allow off-site parking, is there some requirement that? Can't like, build a building and somebody has another building, can't go across the property line and some of their parking. Or if there's a vacant lot, can use that.
Yeah, I think that's right.
It's something.
Or there's like a special exception process or something that's required.
Yeah, so if that's a hurdle, they're using more efficiently existing parking. Maybe think about taking that.
All that's on here and then only. Well, I think all of it, a lot of it. Parking requirements, uh, full elimination might be a stretch, but.
Yeah.
But just because we are still a community where people drive to where they want to go. But we don't have the. But that said, I think some of the examples you put up there were amusing enough. A good examples of why maybe we're at, where we're at, it's over, overbuilt for parking. There was one other incentive to go back to the last thing, but uh, possibly, I don't know if it, it uh, needs to be looked at per se, but. Uh, setbacks is something that, um. I don't know how this is going to come up, but, um. Just, you know, if you're building even, um. In the building area, housing in the building area, you've got ten feet on either side, um, do we need twenty feet between every building? Um, I don't know the answer to that.
Might add under the actions, right, we're looking, we're looking for something we can measure. Um, let's figure out how to drop down that twenty five percent number. Um, in terms of, that's the kind of surface parking that we have out there that could use for developers. That's something that the children actually could measure that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at action one, one, under. Uh, under objective, increase the use of infill, um, and it says, update the zoning ordinance to support infill adaptive reuse and redevelopment activities. I propose redevelopment activities centers and places with access parking.
Yeah, let's do that.
Uh, let's see, um. Or anybody else, yeah, I mean, you can, you can give them.
I had a couple of comments then. Does adaptive reuse need to have its own objective? Is that big enough? It's just a question to ponder, I'm not saying yes or no. But I'm curious if I read that string of, pull it back up, the string of descriptors in there. Infill, higher density development, adaptive reuse development, that that seems like a lot. And adaptive reuse is one that kind of stood out to me, this. Focus particularly just on the existing buildings, right, so something to think about, does that need to be a standalone objective? And then with affordability of housing being such a crisis, I was just surprised to see that language, any of the objectives. I see it kind of pop in one of the actions, okay, with what it is, kind of talked in there, but just surprised that wasn't. One of the objectives and since we had to go to answer now, but not that to be surprising.
Yeah, uh, echoing for you on that, that the, um. Objectives are more like what we can encourage to be built or 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 preserved. Rather than uh, an objective that's sort of building up everyone. I did have one thing, I mentioned this in the previous, uh, PC meetings, um. There were a few slides that referred to getting to the parks and and all the things about the parks and and as far as I can tell, we, it's actually park singular. In the development area, um, uh, or at least the urban ring, um, it's Charlotte, uh, Humphreys Park. Otherwise, I don't know what parks we'd have in the, in the urban ring, um, so, uh. Idea of actually trying to create some urban style parks for people to gather and is is something that we've talked about. And I think that is probably coming in a future chapter, I just wanted to get kind of. Dog ear that one for how much I I love the idea of programmed park spaces, uh, coming down the back. The other one that that was, a couple things that 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 only a bit was here. I had a question about two point two, I I wasn't, I was trying to figure out what that was about. Uh, update the county's residential bonus density requirements. Remove minimum lot size and street requirements to allow for additional open space slash natural slash recreational space to be retained. What does that mean?
Yes, this one is, I feel like kind of strangely worded, um, and it also, it comes from the, um, Croze area plan update. So it was included there and then we were looking at it and thought, well, this would, you know, make sense to do more broadly. But basically what it's, you know, saying is to update the zoning ordinance, um, to not have those minimum lot size requirements, you know, like. Point two five acres or whatever it might be, and then getting rid of a requirement for a street frontage so that like the, um, you know, house has to front on a street. So that you could have houses that front on a shared amenity space, kind of like a cottage court, which has been done before in the county, but just trying to allow for more. Flexible site design there.
Yeah, okay, so that, it's a. Okay, cool. I think there's a lot in two point three that's, that could be used in a very proactive way, and it's one that I'd like to see our county more of is to. Uh, just in the way that we invested a great deal of money in, uh, the, the revan station. Teachers project, um, to invest our county's substantial resources, substantial potential resources into, uh. More things that will serve people's needs, and I think that can include housing that we built.
Yeah.
And I brought that up before, but, but you know, it's social housing has not been on the table in a serious way, but. Going to keep banging that drill because I think it's important.
So, so this may touch more into, as you said, parts show. I don't want to lay a hell clear because it connects. Um, one of the big things I see in our development areas is that we. We know we've got pocket park here, pocket park there, but what the community really wants is that they want a bike lane or. That solves a serious problem in our neighborhood, they think about. Um, over near Crozay Park, you know, they, how desperately people would love to have sidewalks there, but. You, you never get redevelopment there with the sidewalk profit as part of that, this is not going to happen. Um, I really think we need a parks fund, um, that could be an alternative, um, that if. People just, if it up voluntarily said. You know, I know you have this requirement for for green space, can I contribute to the parks fund? And, and I think that that would be a great way to connect some of our greenways. And provide green space or maybe provide this larger opportunities for parks that they're difficult to achieve in the. So that's something I would say. And then, um. And then also, um, you know, there are several things in the, some of the action items that talked about, um, you know. You know, design with native ecosystems, incorporating native ecosystems, and and the one thing I, I would really like to see is a, um. Again, but here we're in the arts chapter, is, is a goal about, um, providing, um. Existing staff in the county, retreating opportunities and things like that, um, just say, just be the landscape and professional certification. Or, um, or the training and ecosystem design and and other skills to allow them to advance to the point where they have these skills of. You know, look at a landscape and see, oh, look at the native test or here, you know, what would work in this situation, so I think that. You know, I think that'd be a great opportunity for staff to be able to develop those skills, um, and I think. And it would help us develop our growth there in a way that was more ecologically sensitive.
I did a couple of kind of abandoned powers, I guess there's sort of, are things I'm gonna see. One is, we were talking about parking, you know, and thinking about the new work. Whether it's work or retail or whatever it is. When's the last time we as a county said, let's check and see what a typical parking standard should be for each of these uses. How long would those spend? The second thing, I mean, there's been a lot of. I haven't heard of recently, but there was. You know, reducing parking. I don't know how that's playing the other people, but the point being is to think about. Why other communities that we can talk about are reducing parking requirements to ask community to do bars. Why are they finding trends? And then the last thing, this is just based on, I was at a real estate conference last Thursday, Friday. And the, the new. Uh, I guess vision is that retail is sexy. That's what I heard, so. Just as we think about retail uses and you mentioned it in one of your earlier slides, it's possible that retail. Does it affect places like?
Well, it's important to note for county revenue standpoint, that, you know, what makes this revenue positive as a county is retail. Uh, these are industrial sites, are this, these things, I mean, if we, you know, counties have way too much residential, not enough commercial. Um, you know, have a massive infrastructure deficit, and so I think, you know, I would hate to see us, you know. I mean, you may need to, um, facilitate the transition to retail and commercial and other forms, they're more viable. But I think, you know, for us to maintain, maintain viability as a county ourselves. We need those spaces because they're the revenue.
Question slash column, I guess, on two of the other goals that are kind of interlinked, one point seven, one point eight. Um, which is how we monitor these things and and so monitoring our existing, um. Supply versus demand and also, um, monitoring the development area and new housing compared to rural areas. Um, and as far as I can tell, these two goals are basically like, just do our recommendations, really do them. Um, if, if we have an issue, and I know our, our friends here are going to say, no, no, never, never expand it. But like, we don't have, this is like a ten year plan, right, we don't have anything in here to even consider. What happens if, if the demand doesn't exceed the supply and and yard.
I think that's, that's, that's in the other section.
Was that something that we already talked about? I mean, I know we talked about that.
But we will be updating that based on, uh, the feedback you all shared and what the board shared as well. So then, um, probably need to update these actions as well, but it is also a little bit of a carryover from the current plan. Uh, which talks about, you know, consistently doing the land use filled out analysis and kind of tracking these metrics.
And using it as a tool, I think we're sort of, Seth, where do we say on that continuum?
Yeah, I, I think the big thing with that is, is as I said before, you can look at. And that actually is what you said too, um, is that, you know, you look at the density of Charlesville, right? The number of units per acre in Charlesville, when you look at Charlesville's ten square miles. If you look at Alamo County and the size of our, our. We could be a lot more against them, um, I, I think the. Um, estimation of our being filled up is maybe a little.
Yeah, a lot of them require infill and.
Yeah.
We have some real challenges with, uh, covenants too, that prevent it.
Right, so I mean, I, and that, one thing I I thought about too, this is probably outside the realm of what I'm not going to possibly do, but I, I think about just the. How development used to occur within communities and you used to have, you have a bunch of houses and then. Over time, you know, those houses would get redeveloped into apartments and those become. You know, larger buildings, and you're like, there's this continuum that happened on the landscape, it's how you had these. These communities, I think about the town my grandparents grew up in, where you could, you know, walk to grocery store or drugstore, and they sort of developed naturally. Of course, cars disrupt that whole thing, but. Now we've sort of like locked uses in place, we're saying like, okay, this is single family housing, and now it's locked that way forever. And like, isn't it all possible to ask when we get applications to say? Can you imagine the transition of what this could be in, you know, fifty years, like, is there, can you include a plan for? Not just what it is now, but what it could be, and that's, all that's side scope what we can do, but. I just.
Oh yeah, I was thinking about that in terms of, you know, we already, I already. We have this overlay with, may feed into more future rezoning, but a lot of that overlay with the neighborhood residential is not very dense. Um, so, um, how we address that?
All right, thank you, we're good?
Thank you very much.
Will you just one more time, I'm sorry, I know you did this with the schedule. Remind us of. The materials that you already sent us.
Sure.
Advance, and what you're looking for.
Yes, definitely not easy to keep track of, um, so of course, we've, you know, shared the full development areas chapter. You all have now gone through the full chapter, so we'll check back in, um, with the board next week on the actions. And we'll send them, um, an email with your all's feedback as well, given the turnaround time. And then I believe a few days ago. You all just received the rural area land use chapter, and that was the full chapter, um, but the discussion will be into planning commission work sessions, so. I think the discussion next Tuesday will be mostly focused on the policy part of the chapter or everything, kind of before the goals, objectives and actions. Maybe getting into those a little bit, um, but focusing more on those at the December tenth work session. And then the board will discuss the whole chapter in January, uh, and there will be more chapters to come soon as well.
Great. Now, your calendar?
I want to copy off dark.
I've got a six o'clock.
Yeah, November, November nineteenth. It should be six o'clock, because it's the only thing we're dealing with for that night, my father bring you guys in at six, to be know anything else.
So usually, so usually things get in my calendar because, because you guys set up the emails, I guess from Caroline's. So, there's not a calendar invite for these things, I'd love to get one so they.
So just a, can we recap it, for the nineteenth is at six? What is it?
Apparently, you guys received an email, Carolyn said four o'clock on, for next Tuesday. My attempt was bringing in at six o'clock. Uh, on that Tuesday the nineteenth, is that preferable for you? You, you would just adjourn to next Tuesday, if, when you close this meeting tonight, you would adjourn to next Tuesday at six P M.
Which is, I think what actually says in your agenda packet right here, so. Everybody wants some six o'clock. Sorry, and then night, so that's next, that's nineteen, and then the following week.
And we do have the twenty six, uh, that should be at four.
I do have that.
But nothing cop plan related at that meeting.
That's probably yours.
Actually, you need to review the, the carrying buffer.
And are there public hearings?
That's lining all day right there. I'm gonna save all my time to you.
Generally speaking, the way we're gonna try and work this is, um, we'll have regular business type meetings. Second and the fourth, as we've always done, we'll try and put work sessions at four o'clock on those days. The one in the middle, the third one of the month, try to bring you guys in at six. Just dealing with AC40, every part of it tonight already.
All right, sounds good. Great. So I will put us in recess until six o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you say we're go? We're go. Are we live?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 12th. That sounds really loud. Sorry, November 12th, meeting of the planning commission. I'll call us back to order, uh, and ask for the roll, please.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne.
Here.
Mr. Missile.
Here.
Mr. Carizana.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk is absent and Mr. Bivens is absent.
Great, thank you. So we've established a quorum. Um, with that, we'll move on to the matters that are not listed on the public hearing agenda. Are there any public comments that would, anyone would like to share on matters not listed on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, my name is Sunshine Mathon. I'm the, uh, I'm a resident in the Rye Hill district of Admiral County. Um, on, uh, Allwood Lane, and I'm here to speak on the sort of trajectory of affordable housing as is discussed in the comp plan moving forward. And I'm the executive director of Piedmont Housing Alliance, uh, serving Charlottesville City, Admiral County, and a few other surrounding counties as well. Uh, so it's the nature of the work that I do. I wanted to share a few thoughts as the planning commission and then the board of supervisors moves into consideration of affordable housing. Uh, prioritization, policy, et cetera, uh, in the comp plan and a future rezoning at some point. Um, and in particular, I wanted to highlight, uh, a few key, uh, plant a few seeds and highlight a few key concepts. The affordable housing and the, there's housing landscape in general is tied to a whole host of factors that some of which you are, you know, uh, obviously directly familiar with. But I do want to highlight three in particular that, um, are most impactful, particularly in our region. One is, uh, first, a history of racial covenants and exclusionary tactics that was true in the city. It was true in Admiral County. Many of you have probably seen the work that Jordi Jaeger and the Jefferson School, uh, the, um, Jefferson, um, African American Heritage Center has done to document, uh, racialized covenants, both in the city and the county. That history has shaped the way that many of our, many of the, uh, families that live, whether we're white families, black families, uh, or other folks of color. It has shaped the, um, where people live, how people have accrued wealth or not. Um, and that is a huge part of the, the, um, underlying, uh, uh, base, the base of the, the, of the, how Admiral County has come to be in many ways, including the city. On top of that, uh, and you all know that supply and demand is a key factor in any level of affordability, whether it's housing or any other commodity, so to speak. Um, and that is certainly true in Admiral County and Charlottesville in this region. It is true nationwide. The general rule of thumb is that, uh, as a nation, we are somewhere between 10 and 20 years behind the curve on the, the housing supply equation. And what that does ultimately, obviously, is drive up the cost of housing. And it actually means that there's a, a gap in housing at all levels of affordability, which then as, uh, higher income individuals and households are looking for housing, it pushes that they look, uh, where they can't find housing in the, what the way that they're looking for. They, they look into other areas that would otherwise be moderate, uh, uh, housing, moderate cost housing that would then displace those families and then so forth. Okay. It's a cascading effect that ultimately puts the greatest pressure on those with the greatest need, those in the 30, 40 and 50% of the area. So the gap, when you look at the housing needs assessment that the county has done, the city has done, the greatest gap is at those, those deepest levels of affordability. The other factor of the supply demand issue is that it has, it create, it inevitably inflates the cost of land, which makes it more and more difficult to build in affordability, either naturally or with subsidy. That, um, that factor has, has essentially created, um, it, it, it creates an uneven playing field that privileges, um, the higher cost housing unless there is direct intervention. And that direct intervention has to take place at, uh, with, with every possible tool set. It has to require, at, at this point, there is no way to build affordable housing without some form of subsidy. That can be direct dollar subsidy, that can be density bonuses, that can be, uh, the, the policies that, that get put forth in the, the comp plan and then ultimately in zoning. Um, every tool and a tool in the toolbox has to be utilized if we're gonna have, if we're gonna reach any level of affordability, but in particular for folks at the deepest levels. And one key concept that I want to reinforce is that, um, supply alone is important but insufficient. Yes, supply has to be part of the equation, but if that's all we do through the comp plan and through the rezoning process, it will not result in achieving the depth of affordability that we know that our, our constituents need. That sort of background, I wanted to highlight a couple of ideas, um, or a couple of, uh, of other jurisdictions that have actually, uh, confronted this work as planting seeds for the planning commission to consider in the few, in its future deliberations. And the first one I want to actually highlight is, uh, Cambridge, Massachusetts. And some of you may or may not be familiar, but in 2020, uh, Cambridge passed the, um, the only, um, sort of rezoning, uh, it overlay that I'm aware of in the country. It's called the Cambridge 100%, 100% affordable housing overlay. And essentially what it did is it, and it's designed, this, in this case, it's designed specifically for affordable housing developers. It, um, more quickly and more predictably allows, and this is direct quote from the, from the text, allows for the creation of new affordable housing that is denser than one might be allowed in base zoning and a, and a new review process through which new affordable housing can be approved more efficiently. So fundamentally, you have your base zoning, uh, that you allow throughout the city in different ways. Some commercial, some, uh, multifamily, some single family. But the hundred, the affordable housing overlay essentially allows for by right, if you're doing affordable housing, 100% affordable housing allows you, uh, increased density, uh, and at all of those jurisdictions, all those zoning districts. What that does is it starts to balance the playing field between the traditional market rate developers and the affordable housing developers. So if under the base zoning, a, uh, you could build 100 units by right under, for a market rate development, you might be able to build 150, uh, by right under the affordable housing. Now it's, it's differentiated depending, depending on the nature of the base zoning. But there is consistently this increase, this overlay that makes it automatic for someone, for an organization pursuing affordable housing to get increased density. So then what it does is it means that as an affordable housing developer, I can pay more for the land that I would otherwise and put it in, at par with market rate developers because I'm actually distributing that cost over more units, if that makes sense. Um, there is another aspect which is, um, I think somewhat controversial, but, but still a really useful tool, which is that it actually, uh, provides a mechanism for affordable housing projects to move through the planning commission and, um, and other systems within, other approval systems within the city much more quickly than it would in a traditional, uh, market rate development. Um, I'm not going to go into the details here. I would just encourage you to take a look at the overlay. One, there was a, a review that was done in early 2024, about four years or three and a half years after the original, um, overlay was created. And the, the vice mayor, uh, commented that they averaged on, uh, before the overlay, they averaged about 40 units a year of affordable housing. After the overlay, they were averaging about 200 units a year in affordable housing. So it had, it's had a pretty significant impact overall. Um, the last jurisdiction that I, the other jurisdiction I'd like to point to is one right next door, Charlottesville. Um, some, I don't know if any of you live in the city, uh, but there is, it is worth, uh, paying close attention to. The process that the city went through, um, was somewhat unique in that it started with an affordable housing plan that established goals and parameters, moved into the comprehensive plan, which set the sort of basic framework at the land use level, and then moved into rezoning that took the, the, the comp plan concepts and put them, you know, codified them in code. There are a number of factors in there that I would really encourage you to take a look at. Um, but in particular, uh, what it, what it ended up doing, uh, the city ended up doing is sort of a hybrid between an overlay and a more robust inclusionary zoning, uh, uh, concept. So at the lower density levels in the residential districts, it essentially did apply its own version of that overlay concept. So if you are in a residential, uh, a previously single family district, a residential district where you might now have as a base zoning, say up to three units on a, on a residential lot, a fourth, if you are going to keep the existing building to privilege, um, preservation. But if you were doing affordable housing, you might be able to do up to six or eight by right. And so you gave this baseline increase, uh, as an overlay across all the residential districts. It didn't apply that same concept to the higher density districts. Instead, there's an inclusionary zoning, uh, component where essentially you get additional, uh, additional, uh, density increase. But there's also a mandate around, uh, having a percentage of affordable housing. But so I'm gonna pause my comments there. I just want to reinforce that as the, the planning commission considers the future of how Admiral County is going to approach this question of affordability, that, um, even though that your purview as planning commissioners won't encompass all aspects of every tool, um, this is that your role in looking at the comp plan and ultimately in rezoning is crucial as that foundation on which, on which the other tools can be employed. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you very much. And as you may know, and I checked with staff too, the affordable housing chapter of the comp plan will be coming up for discussion sometime, I think around February. From a timing standpoint, so thank you.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Looking forward to future conversations.
Is there any other public comment on items not associated with tonight's agenda? Thank you. Name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Emily Dreyfus, and I'm here on behalf of the Legal A Justice Center and the Charlottesville Low Income Housing Coalition. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, I am a people person and you all as land use experts have a lot to bring to the table. I wanted to share a bit about what I've learned as, um, in my job as a community organizer in talking with people in the community. And also I think as we've all witnessed, um, the number of people who are, the increasing number of people who have become homeless, who are locals, majority of them are locals. They moved from a, an apartment in Charlottesville or Almar to the street. And what I see in my work where I talk with low income residents, um, routinely is that people are really hurting. They don't have options. They cannot find places to live. They're, um, often living in very difficult conditions uh, because they don't have other places to go and they are rent burdened. Um, so I agree with all of the recommendations and statements that Sunshine Mathan just made. And I wanted to point out that it really takes a salary of over $70,000 to not be rent burdened and afford an average priced apartment in the area. Um, the rent costs in the Charlottesville, Almar area have gone up over 30% just in the last four years. The quality of life is really, um, hurting and I appreciated your early conversation about balancing quality of life, equity concerns, environmental stewardship. Those are all really important issues. I think a lot of times what we don't see because we're not living it is the quality of life suffering that's going on. And I encourage you to increase the growth areas and increase density with upzoning. An overlay district sounds like a, um, wonderful option. And, um, hope, I hope that you will really look deeply at how you can take action that will be ambitious to, um, address these issues through the AC44 process. Thank you.
Thank you. There any other comment on items not on the public hearing agenda? All right, seeing none. Uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would anybody on the commission like to either pull the item or offer a um, motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Great. Thank you. Could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Carizana.
Hi.
Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Commissioner Firehawk. With that, we'll move on to the public hearings and begin with SP 2022 dash 26, the Schul property and ask for the staff report.
Uh, well, good evening, everyone. My name is Cameron Langel, and I'm a principal planner with the planning division of the community development department. Tonight I'll be giving you the staff presentation recommendation on SP 2022 dash 26, which is the Schall property. This is a request for a public garage on a piece of land in the county that's owned RA rural areas. Before we get into the details, um, I think it's important to note that tonight is the second public hearing we've had on this item. It previously went to the commission on March 12th of 2024. At the request of the applicant, it was deferred. There have been some updates to the proposal itself since then. I think my presentation is going to be pretty similar to what you saw back in March. I've updated it slightly. Um, but, uh, I just wanted to make that known. This is the second public hearing for this item. So to begin, this is where we're located. Our parcel of land is highlighted in yellow in the center of your screen. It's known as tax map parcel 121 dash 86I. It measures 6.41 acres. It's owned RA rural areas. It is in the entrance corridor overlay zoning district. And it is right at the southeast corner of the intersection between Scottsville Road, Coles Rolling Road and Plank Road. Um, there's a, a variety of surrounding uses in the immediate vicinity of the property. There's the Keen Post Office. There's also the Piedmont Veterinary Service Clinic, the Green Mountain Country Store. Um, the Keen VDOT area headquarters is located slightly to the east on Coles Rolling Road. And then the remaining properties are either undeveloped or feature, um, single family detached residential homes. So as a refresher, let's talk about what a public garage is. Uh, what you see on your screen is the exact text taken from our zoning ordinance. Public garage means a building or portion thereof, other than a private garage that is designed or used for servicing or repairing motor driven vehicles. So the services that would be allowed in a public garage would include things like, uh, engine work, battery and fluid replacement, flat tire repair, safety inspections. A public garage is not a body shop. That has a separate definition in our zoning ordinance, which is a facility. I'm, I'm not, I won't read the whole thing, but basically that's where you take your vehicle. If you get in a big car crash and your car is totaled, or you need significant bodywork done, like, you know, replacing panels on the side of your car, uh, painting and things like that. So a public garage is not a body shop. This is an image of the updated concept plan that has been prepared by the applicant. I'm gonna go ahead and use my laser pointer just to make this a little bit easier for everybody to follow along. So of course we have Coles Rolling Road up here, just like the original proposal that we saw in March. The entrance is in the same location. There's going to be an opaque gate right here. And then surrounding, uh, basically everything that you see that's actually going to be developed within the property, there's going to be a six foot tall fence. Um, there is a forested buffer that exists today. It varies in width for the entire perimeter of the parcel. It has gotten wider in a couple areas, mostly down here on the southeast side. Uh, the staff report touches on that a bit. But the, the most critical things to talk about in terms of changes from what we saw in March is that there is only 2.8 acres of land disturbance now that has been reduced from 3.02 acres with the original proposal. Um, only 1.05 acres of the property will actually be developed for things like building, parking. Only one point zero five acres of the property will actually be developed for things like building, parking and travel ways. And so. When I say that, what that one point five acres means, it means, you know, everything that you see in gray, which that gray represents parking and travel way. You see the building here. There's another building here, which I'll talk about in a moment. The, the areas that you see in white will be graded. There's existing vegetation there that will be cut down. But the purpose of that area is two things. This property is in the rural area, which means it's going to have well and septic. This is where the septic system drain field would be located. And then this area here is where the stormwater detention pond would be proposed. Those are basically in the same place that she saw with the concept plan back in March. The last thing I wanted to talk about, and this was brought up during the public hearing, we had some discussion on it, the commission and staff, and we also heard some comments from members of the public. But originally there was four metal shipping containers that you saw here. That this business was proposing to use for storage of parts or other materials that would be needed to operate the business. Since that time, they have removed the storage containers and they're now proposing a permanent accessory building that's fully enclosed in that same area. So this is the evaluation criteria that staff has to look at when we're looking at a special use permit. I have a detailed analysis in the staff report. I'm not going to read these word for word. Or really get into too much detail, but basically with the changes that have been proposed, our original staff analysis all stays the same. There's going to be, you know, visual and noise, the measures in place that would prevent impacts to adjacent properties. Due to the amount of non-residential uses that are on those adjacent parcels, we feel that in this area, the character would remain unchanged. It's in harmony with the purpose and intent of the chapter. Specifically, there are supplemental regulations in the zoning ordinance that apply to public garages. The original proposal didn't really address anything on the concept plan about that, but they have since revised it to include notes that are the exact language of the supplemental regulations. If this were to be approved by the board, staff would be making sure. That all those supplemental regulations are adhered to and complied with both at the site plan review stage and then once this would be built and actually in operation. Furthermore, consistency with the comprehensive plan. Allowing this use would provide a limited amount of service delivery to residents in the rural areas, which is one of the things from our rural areas chapter that's talked about. And then in terms of environmental protection. With the revisions that have now been made, fifty-nine percent of the existing vegetation on this property would be retained. So from an ecosystem protection standpoint, we, we think that's good. The original proposal was only about fifty-three percent, if I'm not mistaken. So that has increased. The factors favorable, it's consistent with the review criteria for special use permits contained in the zoning ordinance and it's located in the area. Of the rural area zoning district that does have other nearby non-residential uses. Unfavorable factors, the public garage does not actively support agricultural or forestal activities in the rural area. These are the conditions that staff is recommending with approval of this special use permit. They have been slightly changed. Basically, the first one, removed reference to storage containers. The second one, condition number two, there was four letters underneath it originally, and one of them said that if there's storage containers on site, it would be limited to a maximum of four. We've just removed that now that there's a permanent accessory building proposed. And condition number three is exactly the same as you saw it in March. That concludes my presentation. I'd be glad to take any questions from the planning commissioners now.
Great, thank you. Great report. It's really helpful reminder as well. Any questions from commission? Start down with Commissioner Moore.
Basic question. I thank you for the, the total acres of land disturbance comparison from the, the previous proposal to this one. Could you tell me the same for the paved area? What was the previous one? And this one's about an acre of paved, right?
Yeah, so the, the paved area, which would be, you know, the parking travel ways and the buildings itself originally, I believe it was one point three zero acres and it's now one point zero five. Thanks.
Yeah, would there be things like oil changes and that sort of thing going on here? And then what about provisions for a storage of? Potentially contaminated fluids or dangerous?
So oil changes would be allowed in terms of like long-term storage of contaminated fluids. I think that's actually dictated by. ECR, I believe, or the health department. There's other regulations at the state level that these types of businesses have to comply with, but there wouldn't be any. Permanent, you know, storage of those fluids and tanks or something onsite.
Sure. I just have a clarifying question. The conditions indicated hours operation. Just want to confirm that excludes. Towing vehicles to the site that could be done at two in the morning or whenever. It's necessit, necessitated, I should say. Is that correct?
Yeah, like with the condition, the way it's worded, it would allow towing to occur at those times.
Right.
So the way it's worded right now is it says that, you know, there's the hours of operation. But it does allow customers to do drop offs of their personal vehicles earlier than eight AM. So I mean, that's something that we've commonly seen with other public garages that have been approved in the county. They may not open until eight in the morning. But they've got a drop box where you could come and drop your own vehicle. I do not think the way it's worded now would allow tow trucks to be coming in and out of here all night long. It doesn't say anything about that.
Commissioner Karasana?
Just a quick question. Is there any information on the fence itself, the privacy fence that's supposed to surround it? What it? Is it chain link? Is it chain link with the green strips in it or?
I'm going to pan back to one of my slides and I'm sorry, it might be a little bit difficult to see, but this is a detail of the fence. So it would be a minimum of six feet in height for that entire perimeter. And then since this is the entrance corridor, we have said that it needs to be opaque materials just to protect, you know, that, that visual sightline into the property from the roadways. The exact colors, we haven't got that down yet, but that's something that our staff with the architectural review board. And then the ARB itself will be looking at if, as this moves through the process, if the SP were to be approved. Okay, thanks.
Great. I have no questions for staff. Thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask for the applicant's comments.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
My name is Clint Shiflett. I'm with Timmons Group, representing the applicant Tommy Scholl. I think Cameron has a few slides to share, just five or six slides.
Great, thanks.
Some of this will be duplicate, but we just wanted to make sure some of these items were touched on. This one right here, of course, is the application plan. Probably don't need to dwell on that. I think Cameron hit that pretty well. Let me go to the next one. So we showed a slide similar last time, but just getting everybody back up to speed. It's been a while. Just site context, just to show. Site layout in the context of the uses around it. I think this was spoken on as well, but this kind of gives a visual, right? You've got the VDOT headquarters across the street. Green Mountain Country Store, U-Haul Facility, Piedmont Veterinary Service Post Office, and then down the road. About two hundred fifty, three hundred feet is the Southern Almaral Convenience Center as well. Just to show the character of, of the land use as it is today in that area. Next slide. Again, a little bit of duplicate slides that we showed last time, but just kind of looking at view, view shed, if you will, from the street. These two images on the right are coming down Rolling Coles Road headed north. The one view is looking toward the VDOT facility. Actually, the two on the right are both looking. Kind of down the road toward the VDOT facility. Again, show some site context. The two images on the left are coming north on Scottsville. The one up top is at that intersection with some of those uses we mentioned previously. The image on the bottom shows just the heavy existing vegetation that exists today roadside. That's looking right at the parcel to the right is, is the parcel in question with the heavy vegetation. Next slide. This is touch on as well, but again, just to get a visual of, of kind of the evolution of this project. As we've taken in community feedback and public meetings. This image on the left, it was from our original SUP application plan. Took this to the community at the community meeting, received staff feedback as well. So Tommy and I went back to the drawing board, figured out how can we dial the project back, the impact on the site. And preserve more buffer and things of that nature. With that, we came up with a thirty-seven percent reduction between. September two thousand twenty-two and the application plan that you guys first saw in March. Represented a thirty-seven percent reduction in land disturbance. Next slide. And then further moving on and, and further taking in feedback and refining the design. We were able to reduce the overall disturbance by an additional seven percent, which represents a forty-one percent. Reduction and, and what we went in with originally to where we're at here today with today's application plan there on the right. Next slide. And lastly, I know, I know you guys hit most of this already. Just wanted to just reiterate some of the conditions that are in place today. With the recommended approval as well as some of the ordinance items, bringing these up because this is, addresses a lot of what we've heard from the community. As it relates to their concerns of the site. The restricted hours of operation, the use being limited to repairing, equipping of vehicles. The limit vehicle storage to thirty day maximum on site. The screening and landscape plannings and final site layout, just a reminder that that will be reviewed by ARB. So the opaque fencing material, the vegetation buffering, things like that goes through that next round at the ARB and will be subject to their review. And again, the, the ordinance that dictates the uses in the public garage. What can be done in the public garage use, that all parts and materials shall be stored within the enclosed building, which we proposed. And that no vehicles awaiting repair shall be located on any portion of the site that can be visible from the public street or any other residential properties. One, one thing I did want to address, I think I heard a question about towing and after hours. You know, Tommy and I circled up before this to get an understanding of, of his operations and things of that nature. They obviously keep really good records, tow logs, things of that nature. He pointed out that in the last thirty days. They only had two cars brought in after hours. And one was at six fifteen AM, the other was about seven thirty PM. A majority of Tommy's operations for tow service is operated out of his Avon parcel. Much closer to town where vast majority of the towing is taking place. So this location is not anticipated to see in any significant. Towing and, and, and after hours would, would certainly be an exception and not the rule. I think that's all we've got. If you guys have any questions, feel free to ask.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Firehawk?
Thank you for the presentation. How many cars do you think you'll service per day in this location?
Sorry, do you mind just identifying yourself for the record?
My name is Tommy Scholl.
Thank you.
I'm gonna say an average three or four.
Okay. Could you, based off of that, could you share a little bit about the thinking behind the, the site design and the amount of pavement that we all see? For three to four cars serviced per day? Could you talk a little bit about that?
So what we do on a site like this is look at, one method to understand how much pavement we need is, okay. Anticipating, you know, employee parking and some number of cars awaiting a pair, repair. But more importantly, I think the, the area you see is understanding. We, we, we run, it's called auto turn modeling. It's modeling the vehicles turning in, turning out and navigating around the site. So what we've got here with this one acre of pavement, which is a reduction from, I think we had about three with that initial one. Really represents that we feel is the bare minimum area that the site could function properly. Where cars awaiting repair could be there and vehicles could also come in and out appropriately and employee parking could, could be facilitated.
And what, what's the biggest size vehicle that you use for that? I'm just curious for your, your turning radius and so forth.
So we modeled a, just said a example vehicle, a, a forty-five foot box truck. Now, as far as how that's equivalent to a vehicle that may be towing, you know, a car, potentially larger vehicles could come in, but that's what we use for our analysis.
Commissioner Murray?
Where do you see your primary customer base coming from for this facility? Do you see this primarily serving the, the rural area? Or do you see this primarily serving your Charlesville residents?
Probably mainly the Charlottesville area.
All right, just come a little closer to the mics.
Probably mainly the Charlottesville area, you know, from, from the beginning. Not to say, you know, won't bring on work from that area, but. I, I really won't have no way of knowing exactly that, but we, we have a lot of requests for repair. Within the towing business, so that's more or less what this is, what this is about.
Thanks.
Great. Commissioner Moore?
I think just based on the letters that we've all gotten on the planning commission, I think there's some concern or just. Not understanding why a full acre of pavement is, is needed for a four bay garage where you're going to, you know, repair three or four cars a day. I always just wondered if you could speak to that a little bit more, like, like the size of the pavement, paved area when. At least the, the garages I go to, you know, also have three or four bays and significantly smaller pavement footprint.
Yeah, I can help to speak to that again. Cameron, is it possible to pull the application plan up one more time? Keep one on this slideshow would, would work too.
Not sure why it's not displaying on all the screens right now.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks. So maybe it's hard to make out at this scale, but you can see adjacent to the, the garage building right now, we've got. So that's five parking spaces in that area, right? With a, with a twenty-four foot drive aisle to be able to get around to the building and into that parking space. I bring that up just to show a little context, right? That, that whole corner right there is just to facilitate the five parking spaces. So you can kind of imagine if you, you know, extract that out across the site, it's, it's, it's not that, it's not as large as, as a one acre lot is, doesn't accommodate as. Many vehicles as you would think. Again, the front of the garage facility needs access for cars to come in and out, get backed in. We need to have the ability for, for tow vehicles to be able to dropped off and then the vehicles to swing around and leave. And the ability to access the storage building, that's also included on the site as where, as well as some storage of vehicles. So yeah, it's not an exact science, but you know, it's definitely been evaluated and. Thinking about operations and working with Tommy and understanding what, what they need out of the site. We've arrived at this is, is really the minimum level of asphalt that, that we could, that we could work with.
You don't have any of those auto turn studies with you, do you?
Not handy, no, but I mean, I'm, I'm happy to share them later.
Yeah.
I just had another question about your customer base again. So are the, the cars that you repair, are those, those were from, I say, a car that was towed, it got in a wreck and they want you to repair it or? How, how do, I guess I'm just not sure how you get your clients for repair.
We have a current business and the primary business is towing. Most of the.
So, so somebody would call you and say, my car broke down. Can you tow it and then fix it?
Correct. Yeah, not from a vehicle accident, but just from a disabled vehicle from breaking down.
Like my car breaks down in twenty-nine, I call you and you come take it to that facility.
Absolutely.
And so you're really just looking for a facility where you can expand this business, but not in, not closer to Charlottesville.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
If I could help with some clarity there and correct me if I'm wrong, Tommy, but so the Avon facility, he's got a facility today on Avon.
Yes.
Kind of outgrowing that, that is acting as, the idea is that is mainly going to be the dispatch, right? That's where most of the tow vehicles would be because that's where they would be emanating from because that's closer to their clients that need to be towed in the city. Not going to get a lot of business out in the rural community towing, you know, day to day.
I don't know, my car breaks down a lot.
Well, mostly. And the need has also been asked to, hey, we would love for you guys to be able to provide additional repair services. And so the idea is that this would function as the repair hub.
Okay.
And Avon would continue to function as the hub for the tow vehicles.
Okay. That helps. Thanks.
Thanks. I had a few questions and a couple of these may have already been answered, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding it. One is, when you look at this plan, and I know you replaced the, see that, the C cans or whatever those were with an actual building, an enclosed building. It's adjacent, I'm reading this, it's adjacent to Route 20? That's the backside.
That's Coles Rowling.
That's right. Okay. So you've moved it away from Route 20. Okay. That, I had my things slipped. Never mind. You identified a lot of surrounding uses. That was helpful to see. There's also a lot of residential surrounding uses that you didn't identify, right?
Sure.
So they're, they're kind of mixed in with it. Let's see, and this was the one I think you've already answered maybe two or three times already, but I'll double check. So hours of operation, right, were noted as a timeline between, can't remember what the time was. Cameron, could you go back? Eight and five, eight to five, but you are saying that you can still tow vehicles to this site after hours, right? So it's not like that gate is locked and you're done from eight between, after five and before eight.
I think currently the condition as written would not restrict that, as I understand it.
Would not restrict towing.
Bringing a vehicle in or out after hours. Cameron, correct me if I'm wrong.
So the way I read it is that it does restrict towing. It allows customers to drop their vehicles off earlier than 8:00 AM on the days of operation. I don't know, I've got some staff members here that we could have a discussion and call them up if need be, but that's, that's the way I interpret it as it's written.
So if they chose to open at seven, and I had a car that needed to be repaired, I could drop it off at 7:30?
So, no, they would not be allowed to open prior to 8:00 AM with the way the condition is worded.
That's what I thought, I thought, but I thought you said that they could drop them off before.
Customers could come into the site, park their vehicle, put their keys in a drop box, and then leave the site.
Before?
Yes, before, before eight. Yes. Yes.
So it's not that like the gates closed and it's opened at eight?
So, I mean, that would be something that they would figure out, you know, as we're going through this, but there's ways that those gates can have sensors or something, or given a code where a customer, hey, we call up, I need to get my car serviced. Great. You can drop it off at this time, get out, hit a code in, even if there's no one there, you can get in and then get out, you know, there's different ways that that could work, but.
So I'll redirect that question into Mr. Scholl. What is your operating protocol for that kind of thing? Would you allow access to the internal site after hours? So the gate's not closed and locked when you're done with business?
Yes, it will be closed, but it, I believe they call it like a valet code or something at our current place that we can give a customer that code and that'll open the gate to allow them to come in and drop something.
Interesting. Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Seems that there's some unclarity though around your last question about eight to five and being able to drop off tow trucks. I just want to make sure there's clarity because I heard staff say the way it's written, it doesn't, it doesn't allow that. An applicant maybe seems that.
I'll note this, we're happy to provide, if the condition needs additional clarity in it, I mean, we're happy to restrict tow truck drop off and pickup to within the business hours as well, if that would be helpful. If there's ambiguity there, we can certainly provide that as well. Now, we would still like to leave the ability, we would like to reserve the ability for customer drop off, right? If someone's on their way to work and wants to drop a car off at 7:00 AM on their way to work, to me, that seems reasonable. That's not a large truck. But if there's a way in the conditions to disallow the towing operations and the drop off pickup of the towing to alleviate any concerns about loud vehicles and lights late at night, we're happy to add that to the conditions as well if it needs to be.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you both. Appreciate it. You can sit down.
Yeah, thank you.
And I have a sign up list for public comment. And just as a reminder, you'll have three minutes in total to speak. You'll have green light for the first two and then you'll get a yellow for the last one, if you could wrap up before the red dings. I don't know why I'm looking at that side of the room, but just generally. Also, I'll also mention, just if you agree with what the previous person has said, feel free to just raise your hand. And we will take that as a second set of comments or a plus one or two or three or whatever it is. There's no need to come up and speak if you don't wish to, but you're always welcome. So with that, I will ask, I'll go to the first name and I believe it's Jerome Beasley. And just a reminder to everybody, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good day.
Evening.
My name is Jerome Beasley and my wife and I live in Esmont and own property across the street from the proposed mechanic shop. When the application was initially filed a year ago, and during the community meeting, community meeting in the spring, there were numerous objections, particularly regarding the applicant's blatant violation of zoning laws of both, at both his home and the parcel in question. He operates without consequence, fully aware that enforcement action is unlikely due to the complexities of court action. At the last planning commission, you expressed concern about the neighborhood's lack of trust in the applicant, which is quite reasonable. You might expect the applicant would be motivated to bring his property in compliance with zoning laws. However, he has doubled down and done the opposite. Instead of complying, the applicant has increased his violation by repositioning his commercial towing trucks, tractor trailers, and other business equipment on residential property, which is not permitted. What makes this situation even more alarming is that his property is only a few hundred feet from the proposed site. It is clear to us that this is merely, not merely a public garage, but rather an unauthorized auto and towing shop, as indicated by the size and the after hours drop offs. His violations of ignoring zoning laws are serious concern. Approving this application would allow the applicant to continue bypassing zoning laws and gradually moving his industrial equipment onto the site. This amounts to a bait and switch tactic aimed at the planning commission. The applicant's bad pattern of behavior demonstrates a total disregard for county regulations. Once a special use permit is granted, enforcing its terms of existing laws and regulations will likely become impossible once the applicant establishes itself on the land. Finally, the parcel land commands attention and takes on a prominent focal point on the corner of Highway 20 and Coles Rowling Road, thanks to its elevation and substantial size. However, the establishment of auto mechanic shop, hundreds of feet of fencing along Highway 20 and Coles Rowling Road, and a parking lot for industrial equipment, which starkly contrasts with the rural charm of the area diminishing its character and appeal. I strongly urge you to deny this special use permit to prevent the unfortunate situation unfolding. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Next, I think we have Andrew Brennan.
Evening Commissioners. Andrew Brennan, resident nearly 30 years on Secretary Sand Road of Plank Road. They paved paradise, but they put up a parking lot. 1970, Tony Mitchell, and I'm hoping we're in a better place now than they were then. I want to say actually something about Keene itself, because I think that's rather important and part of the context. I don't know if you know that Theodore Roosevelt had his first Camp David at a place called Pine Knot in 1905, and that's still there, just around the corner from this suggested location that for a tow lot. There are at least three buildings that are in the National Register of Historic Places. Christchurch Grand Dow, you access on Coles Rowling Road, Plain Dealing Farm, access on Coles Rowling Road, and the Rectory, also on the same road. And not to, I also want to mention, of course, the Mount Pleasant Baptist Church, which is a historic black church just across the road. So I would just like to say, I do see that Keene is rather reminds me of your logo behind me there, because we, there are lots of horse farms in the area. Plain Dealing has produced an Olympic horse and silver medal. I don't know if you were aware of that. And then I look at the buildings and I've mentioned some of the historic buildings, and of course you've got the pictures of the orchards up there. And I just, without sounding facetious, I'm hoping that the new logo isn't going to be horsepower rather than horses and we aren't going to be seeing parking lots as opposed to orchards in future. So I would just like to say, I hope, I would urge you to reject this submission. I do think that it's more important that we keep the character of our community, as you are guardians of our county and our countryside. And I'm hoping you will reject this submission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Next is Sarah Sargent.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Sargent. I'm a resident of Esmont. And I just have to get my phone organized here. Sorry. I'm here to voice my opposition, excuse me, to SB 202226. A massive public garage like what was just presented is completely at odds with the pretty community crossroads picture that we have been painted. I wonder how many of you are actually familiar with that intersection. Right now, it has a distinct country charm with the historic veterinary clinic on one side and the Green Mountain Store on the other. While the store does rent U-Hauls, calling at a U-Haul facility suggests a much bigger commercial operation than in fact it is. It is a side business of the store with a handful of U-Haul trucks parked there. The VDOT facility is hidden along Coles Rowling Road, while the recycling center is likewise disguised on Esmont Road. These are necessary civic operations, not private enterprises. Aside from the immediate impact this business will have on the surrounding area, like many of my neighbors, I fear that this is, if this is approved, it will be a giant green light to developers and business owners looking for cheap land. And very soon, instead of pastoral rolling hills dotted with farms that are the hallmark of Albemarle County, as well as orchards, our precious corner will be inundated with subdivisions, solar farms, and businesses that should be relegated to industrial zoned areas either in Charlottesville or Scottsville, which is a mere six miles away. I urge you to reject the submission. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Laurel Davis?
Good evening. I've got a stuffed up nose. I'll try to speak clearly. I'm Laurel Davis. I live on Esmont Road. I moved here 30 years ago for the gorgeous natural beauty and quiet, and to build a home here in which to raise my daughter. And this is what worries me. It feels as though those in charge of making decisions for the future of this county imagine themselves CEOs of a profitable corporation, not the protectors of the nature of this county that we call home. 15 years ago, my then eight-year-old daughter stood before the county board when we were fighting the proposed firing range and said, you're supposed to be the guardians of this county and you're doing a stinky job of it. And I must confess, I feel the same now when I hear about yet another plan to further erode the beauty and rural nature of my neighborhood. A commercial enterprise that has no place being there belongs in an area zoned commercial and industrial. And I can't help but wonder if yet again, there has been a determination made that our end of the county, having the most low income as well as African-American households, somehow doesn't deserve the protections that were written into the comprehensive plan. There was the dumps, there was the proposed firing range, now we have a waste site and now a tow truck depot. I'm not against change in general, but I am against change that destroys the essence of places. I beg you to consider your roles as guardians of this county, a role that should require you to seriously consider the impact of your decisions on the lives and lifestyles of the adjacent community, and whether the proposal will benefit it or will further destroy the rural charm, shatter our peace, and diminish the nature of this beautiful place we call home.
Thank you. Shirley Phillips?
My name is Shirley Phillips. I live on Coles Rowling Road. My land backs up to Charles, to his home and where he is running a business out of now. You all talked about the containers, it's not going to be on the corner. That's because they're on the land behind me. Go there and count the containers there now. He, when they had the first meeting at Walton School, it was relayed that he was running a business. Nothing has been done. Is Albemarle County protecting him in some way? The rest of the residents of Albemarle County has rights to. He continues to do things his way. If this thing gets passed, which it probably will, I don't care what restrictions he has, he will do it his way. Now, tell me this, how many of you all are going to drive your car from Charlottesville to Keene to get it fixed? Now, if he's going to tow trucks, cars down Route 20, which is a dangerous road, you can ask anybody. That's putting another danger on that road. It was stated that the gates would be closed. And if the gates are closed, nobody can drop their cars off. We have, when I first moved there, I moved there in 1972, the state highway was a satellite office, and that has developed into a mega business. I don't think Coles Rowling Road can stand any more traffic, other than the state highway and the horse trail as it goes to Plain Dealing Farm. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I think it's Jeannie Boatright? Sorry, you just need to wait until you get to the mic because we can't hear you.
I'm Jeannie Boatright, and I put this in context. I'm Shirley's next door neighbor. So I've grown up there all my life. I've lived there for 58 years. And I live at 1585, which is directly behind it. And the property that's there on the corner, they have the picture kind of wrong. They have a picture of 20 South and like a whole bunch of wood. You're actually, if you get closer, that corner right there, you can see. You're actually, if you get closer, that corner right there, you can see into the property. And you can see that they have two great big, um, dump dumpsters there right now. They also have, um, it's when you come into the property on Coles Rolling Road, it's a hill and it's kind of a blind hill. We used to own that property there, so I'm the one that could probably speak the most of it. But there's a road there. There always was a road there. R.E., Shirley's son, and I used to ride mini bikes on it when we were kids. And I can't tell you how many times we've driven up through there and almost been rear-ended from coming up that hill on Coles Rolling Road and turning right into that, that road right there. So we have fifteen eighty-five, and that my prop, mine is, uh, it's directly behind the private property. And I, um, can hear large equipments at my house at all times of day that vibrate my home. I did at one time notice large amounts of vehicle, including a tanker. It was like a oil tanker. I don't know what it was. But it was a very large tank tanker, tons of old tow trucks, um, ambulances, uh, trucks and cars. They crushed them all because they got in trouble and they got rid of them. But there's still stuff going on back there. Right now, there are three dumpsters that are back there. They're, they're full of stuff. I don't know what they are. I can see it directly behind there because I have an open area. And when their property that they're going to have can see, can be seen into twenty South. It's not that wooded area right there. It's, it's up closer to where it's at, that corner lot thing. But I have lived there most of my life, and I realized how dangerous twenty South can be. My dad was hit there and was forever unable to work again. With the businesses and extra traffic added to this residential neighborhood, I can see the intersection just getting worse. It's going to be bad. There are lots of VDOT, VDOT trucks and horse trailers now on Coles Rolling Road. This added vehicles cannot be good for the neighborhood. This is going to be, it's also going to decrease my home value. And I know my neighbors, and they have voiced their own concerns about the decrease of their property value because of that business right there and, and the noise that they're going to be making. I feel, I, in closing, I feel that they've been cited already and on their private property, and what is to stop them from making a junkyard on this property? They did have a junkyard on that corner lot right there, and that was also, the vehicles were removed from that. But you could see all of that.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Peter Bertoni?
Good evening. I'm Peter Bertone. I live in Esmont. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the commission. If it doesn't walk like a duck and if it doesn't talk like a duck, it's probably not a duck. And in this case, it's no public garage. The applicant has a successful towing, empowerment, and vehicle storage business on Avon, Avon Street Extended, as you know. And he would like to replicate much of that business in Keene. But knowing that such a commercial establishment would not be allowed under the regulations in a rural area, the applicant is trying to position the proposed facility as a prob, as a public garage. Do not be fooled. It's no public garage. There are, however, four public garages that adequately serve the Keene area. Southside Garage, East Main Garage, West River Garage, and a garage on Plank Road, only one-quarter mile from the applicant site. Each has a scale appropriate for a public garage in a rural area and look nothing like the proposed site. The Plank Road and Southside garages have no hard surfaces, none, for parked vehicles awaiting repairs, while East Main and, and West River have less than five thousand square feet for vehicles awaiting repairs. In comparison, the applicant is requesting over forty thousand square feet of asphalt, which is ten times larger than even the largest public garage footprint, and an astonishing twenty times the average. Right? Because the applicant needs space to park and maneuver a fleet of large tow trucks and store impounded cars. The existing public garages have no retaining ponds, but the applicant is requesting one. Why? The reason's obvious. Ten times too much asphalt. The existing public garages have no gate, but the applicant is requesting one. Why? Public garages do not need to lock away and protect impounded, impounded cars. The existing public garages have an average roof footprint of two thousand square feet instead of the requested six thousand. It is clear that the applicant is trying to cite and disallow towing, empowerment, and vehicle storage business in Keene under the guise of a public garage as he is currently doing improperly at his current residence. Do not be fooled. This is not an applicant, application for a public garage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. John Cosette?
Hello, my name is John Cosette, and I live in Scottsville. And, um, I'm not sure if I have anything much to add because my, um, neighbors have said everything so eloquently, um, of what I feel. But we moved to Southern Albemarle County, um, twenty years ago, really, because we wanted to live in a historic rural area. We live in a historic farm. Um, and I believe Route twenty is a historic byway. So I'm curious why we would even consider, um, such a large commercial endeavor to be, um, in place in, in an area where it doesn't belong. Not that I'm against small businesses. I support small businesses wherever I can. But I feel this is a much larger, um, repair shop that I have ever seen. And I certainly don't understand the footprint request and feel like something like that should exist in a commercial or industrial area and not in a rural agriculture residential area. My heart goes out to the neighbors. Um, if you were to drive by, it's quite unsightly. Um, to see the Schul residents and all of the trucks that are currently being stored there. Um, it's really not fair for them. They've lived there forever. It's not fair for us that live in the southern part of the county, which is really a celebration of the historic rural community, which Albemarle County, I see signs as soon as I get out of the airport or as soon as I am in the, um, um, place where you get your luggage. There's this big sign celebrating historic rural Albemarle County, county offices. Another sign celebrating rural. So I beg you, I ask you, please honor what we're all about in the southern part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Beasley? Tim Schmidt is on deck. You can feel free to actually come up behind the current speaker. If you want to save some time, we can roll through.
My name is Paula Beasley. I live at six-one-nine-eight Green Mountain Road and own seventeen-nine E. Coles Rolling Road. For at least three decades, the Comprehensive Plan has supported preservation and protection of our rural areas and its agricultural, forestal, equine, and related endeavors. This industrial-commercial application is not permissible on a rural area-zoned parcel. Two on inconsequential changes to the application don't change that fact. And in fact, one of the changes, as I just saw this evening, is they will denude all the trees on the side of the residential properties directly in front of our home, our rental home. And also, the four containers that were only twelve hundred eighty-six square feet are now replaced with a two thousand square foot permanent structure. Under county regs and UVA law, public garages are distinguishable from auto repair and towing shops, body shops, yet another category. And none of those are permitted by right or by special use permit in the rural areas. This, um, decisions such as the state-owned VDOT and the size and scope of the recycle center at least supportive uses should not be used to shoe home, shoehorn in this commercial enterprise or be used to justify future Keene industrial activity that will spur development. Insightful for the Crossroads Community Designation Conversations. Our community very loudly and clearly doesn't want or need this industrial-sized, really an impermissible auto repair and towing shop in our historic rural intersection. Why are all the relevant criteria and considerations being bent to approve this application? Good for the applicant for, for being successful and expanding his business, which enables him to do it in a commercial industrial area where it belongs. Who will be protecting the interests and voices? The elderly widowed residents, having lived there over fifty years with the expectation the rural area zoning will be honored? Forfeiting their quiet hood to bolster the profits of one man, they will experience a detrimental change in their environment and way of life and certainly interrupt the harmony of the area with the beeping of trucks backing up the ambient noise of a commercial enterprise and trying to avoid them in the eighteen-wheelers when driving to the Green Mountain Store or town for groceries and supplies. The economic drivers the country should be supporting in the rural areas are agricultural, forestal, equine, and related businesses, not industrial sprawl. Look at the broader context of the area. Approval of individual commercial endeavors, i.e. spot zoning, will transform rural areas into sprawl and ultimately the end of rural areas. Once built, the damage is done. No fines, no SUP reservation, revocation will restore the site or the rural areas. You may not be control, you may not have controlled the state's VDOT decision, but you do control this one. Please preserve our commercial.
I'm Tim Schmidt, and then Kim Schmidt, you're on deck. We can share.
I'm Tim Schmidt. My wife and I live at six-five-oh-seven Scottsville Road.
You might want to raise the mic if you could. It's hard to hear. Thank you. Appreciate it.
My wife and I live at six-five-oh-seven Scottsville Road. We've owned the property for about thirty years. Yeah. I wrote a speech today, spent some time on it, and it really boils down to who here believes that a four-bay garage requires an acre of asphalt paving and the subsequent big fence around it, the drainage pond and all that? This is just playing into a loophole in the zoning that says, oh, a garage is allowed in the rural areas. This is a sidelight. It's just a way to get an industrial storage site that okayed for the rural area. I'm really concerned. What you have, the picture there is, was taken yesterday as I was driving along twenty with my little iPhone, took the picture. That is what the Schul property looks like now. The private property of Schul. Notice that there are semis, trailers, various vehicles, um, and excavation equipment. These are all in violation of the current zoning, current zoning rules. And I've even, that has been inspected recently. And it is legitimately in violation of the zoning rules. What we expect at this site, and why everybody is so upset, is we, nobody needs an acre for four bays of a garage. This will end up being a towing site or a storage site for construction equipment, both of which are not allowed, but who's going to check on this? Are we going to send the, the zoning commission office out to check every two weeks to see if these cars have been sitting for thirty days? No. And there's going to be a fence around it. It's going to be locked. Who can go in there and check what's going on? My wife and I have already gotten three letters from a lawyer saying, "Don't enter this property." And we have never even set foot on the property. We do not trust the situation. We know it's going to be abused. And by history, um, the, the applicant has abused the zoning rules in the past and is not compliant with the rules as they are clearly spoken. So now, look at this. Let's not be naive. Ask yourself, is this really a legitimate garage that they're applying for? Or is this just a way to move an industrial business into our rural area? Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Schmidt, and then I think it's Nick Saki. Sorry if I've mispronounced that. You're on deck.
Hello?
Hello?
Um, my name is Kim Schmidt. I'm married to the tall guy that just spoke, and we live-
You might want to lower the mic.
Pardon?
You might want to lower the mic.
Yeah, oh yeah. Um, we live on a horse farm. We moved here from Florida where development is crazy and there's no protection. And I said, "I want to live where it's least likely to grow." And we had our real, our realtor said, "I don't, we've lived someplace where things are developed crazy and you have no protection, and zoning has changed." And so we found Southern Albemarle to raise our kids. And we have been to these meetings for over a year now for this thing. Um, so we've been to many meetings, written many letters. I have a question for you, and this has been brought up. But what is your job, commissioners? Is it to protect our community? And that's, when we moved here, Albemarle County supports agriculture. We knew that. That's why we bought a horse farm there. Um, many of us have stood up and spoken and written letters. Nothing has changed. You've already heard all about that. At the meeting in March, there was a deferral on these proceedings. I found it very interesting that Mr. Missile had picked up on one important element from all of the many topics brought up. He said that it was clear that this community did not trust Mr. Schul. Mr. Missile had boiled down, boiled down all the hours of debate to one important thing that he focused on. He said that clearly, it was obvious there was a lack of trust. The community simply doesn't trust him. After the many meetings and letters and phone calls, Mr. Schul has done exactly what we expected, exactly what we warned you he would do. He was not in compliance then. He is not now. He doesn't hide it. He hasn't, this is a question of honorable. He does not care about our community, is how we feel. He does not care about the historical nature and rural lifestyle of our community. He does not care that the unsightly nature of this business is not suitable for this area. So we don't trust him, but we are trusting you, the commission, to do what is right, to do your job, to uphold the zoning that is in place and protect this community you serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Saki, I believe. Let's even close, and then I can't read the first name of this. Last name is Hall, I believe, is on deck.
My handwriting must be terrible.
Sorry. Get close, did I?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Nick Duke, D-K-E.
Is that what I said?
I reside, uh, on Alberine Road in Esmont. I wish to state my strong opposition to the special use permit application of Schul's property wrecker service proposed for the intersection of Route twenty, that's Scottsville Road and Coles Rolling Road in Keene. So there are two primary reasons I oppose this permit. I'll keep it short. Number one is traffic. Route twenty has seen a huge increase in car and truck commuter, commuter traffic to and from Scottsville, especially during the hours of six AM and nine AM and in the evenings after four-thirty PM. It's especially difficult and dangerous already to attempt to enter Route twenty north at the intersection of Coles Rolling Road from Esmont Plank Road during these times. There are no blinking red warning lights or stoplights that could slow traffic at this intersection. Adding a succession of huge tow trucks with vehicles in tow, turning onto Coles Rolling Road from Route twenty at all hours of the day and night will drastically increase the danger of crashes and fatal accidents. of crashes and fatal accidents that may be on your hands. Number two, I respect, excuse me, respect for our rural communities. On both the east and west sides of Route 20 at this intersection, the proposed Shoal facility comes into direct conflict with the agricultural, forestal, natural, scenic and historic resources of this rural area. There are nearby farms and historic venues that provide passive, safe and invaluable economic impact with hay and crop production, veterinary services, equine programs and clinics, winery tourism, as well as bed and breakfast venues. I do not believe the location, character, size and extent of this proposed facility is in compliance with the county's comprehensive plan. Nearby neighbors and area residents are in opposition to this facility. We do not need or want an asphalted wrecker service parking lot and public garage buildings on this wooded property in our rural neighborhood.
Thank you. Maybe if you could just-
Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And I apologize, Mr. Duke. I'll do you the courtesy of calling you by the right name. Next one, thank you, and then followed by Susan Love, and that takes us to the end of our-
I thought I was next.
You are next, but followed by Susan.
My name's Collins Huff, and I'm a resident of Esmont. With all due respect to my neighbors who are in opposition to this, I'd like to say that I think that if you look at the book Home From Nowhere by Howard Cunslar, most of it is chronicling the expansion of urban sprawl. Kind of the opposite of that this touched on is the decline of the rural economy. And one of the things that, the takeaway from both of those is the village concept. And the village concept is the idea that you might be able to work, shop, obtain basic services within proximity to your own property. I would argue that Mr. Shoals' business is actually beneficial to the farms. I'd much rather have a horse trailer broke down, fixed in Keene than towed all the way up Route 20. I'd also like to say that I think whoever he may employ there would not have to commute all the way into town. Anybody from Southern Alamo that worked for him wouldn't have to commute all the way to town. Also, anybody that got their car done there wouldn't have to go into town. That would actually take pressure off of Route 20. And so I think the logging trucks, the farmers, I'm a farmer, I get my truck worked on at his shop on Avon Street. And I'd much rather be able to get it done closer to the farm than further from the farm. About all I have to say.
Thank you. Susan Love.
Good evening, gentlemen. How is everyone and lady? It's very good to see you. Thank you so much for hearing our concerns this evening. I agree with everything all of my friends have said, except for the gentleman who just spoke. I kind of disagree with him, but I'm going to speak to you about a different matter, and that is your heart. I'm sorry. I have been a schoolteacher for 34 years, and I have put everything I have into my home that is one mile from the proposed special permit. Everything. 34 years in the classroom, people. It's everything to me. And I just feel like if your home was one mile from this, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. So I need to put that out there first because that's what it boils down to for me. I put everything I had into a place because it had peace and solitude. Bottom line. I also want to mention that he has the other property in town. So his business is already not a rural business. It's a business in town. So that's why I disagree with the gentleman who just spoke. The other thing I'd like to say, that my friend Nick Duke, or Saki if you will, mentioned red flashing lights. Don't get any ideas, because we don't want those either. I'm a math teacher. I'm a mathematician. So I'm noticing 1 and 3 tenths of an acre to 1 and 5 hundredths of an acre. Friends, that is not a big difference. I also heard the numbers 59% to 53%. If I'm teaching a class on mathematics, which I do every day, that's not a huge decrease. Peace does not equal noise. Rural does not equal traffic. Asphalt is not congruent to environmentally friendly. Approval does not support your constituents. Do the restrictions really matter if there's no one to enforce them? Because there's not. I don't think our rural county has the bandwidth for it. And I don't think you do either. Once this is done, it will be very hard to undo it. You will vote and you will move on, but we will have to live with it every single day in a place that we've put everything we have into. And I want you to think about that when you place this vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I have exhausted my list of names that I've not been able to pronounce and would like to just open it up to see if there's someone who has not spoken who would like to come up. If so, feel free to state your name for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Sophie Massey. I live near Scottsville. I've actually been a happy customer of Shoals Towing in the past. So my comments are actually about taking issue with the permit. I'm to state the obvious, Shoals is applying for a special use permit for a public garage, a use that is allowed in the rural area but only with a special use permit. But their application and stated intentions and plans they've submitted reflect their desire to open and operate a garage and a storing, wrecking, towing business. Towing falls under Section 3.1 in the county code under storage, warehousing, distribution, transportation, and it's allowed by right in the highway, commercial and industrial districts and with a special use permit in the commercial, commercial office and downtown Crowe's districts. It is not permitted even with a special use permit in the rural district. This distinction in the county code reflects the wisdom of the zoning ordinance in prohibiting intensive commercial uses in the rural and residential districts. This particular special use permit is not the appropriate avenue for this business to try to operate in the rural area. It would be like a hospital trying to open in Keene by applying for a special use permit for a daycare because the hospital happens to offer daycare to its employees. The public garage special use permit does not fully reflect what the applicant intends to do. The applicant should either resubmit an application for a little country garage with square footage to match that modest usage and a prohibition on towing and impoundment, or the applicant could try to change the zoning ordinances to allow this kind of commercial industrial use in the rural area. I think that would be tough. Or the applicant could identify a location in the county where this type of commercial industrial use is permitted by right or with a special use permit, i.e. not in the rural residential area. Because as it stands now, what the applicant wants to do, this garage, towing, warehouse, hybrid model, is not permitted even with a special use permit in the rural area. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Evening.
Good evening. My name's Roberta Williams, and I live at 1790 Coles Rolling Road. I'm the lucky or unlucky person who lives across the street from where the proposed entrance is going to be. My first question to all of you is, have any of you tried to turn in the intersection of Route 20 and Coles Rolling Road? Okay. So you know how dangerous it is. That intersection has eight different options. It has limited sightlines, and the roads don't line up. It's crazy. Because there are high speeds on Coles Rolling Road, after you come through that intersection, the entrance to the proposed site is not a great distance. So when they come flying through, I can hear it. I can see it, and I hear the tires. It's a little scary. It's a little daunting. Turning into that site, they're going to have to turn into the opposing lane to turn right into it. I know that because I drive a Ford 350 long bed, or horse head-to-head trailer that's 45 feet long. It's not going to be easy. Besides that, it's the noise. When their kids are playing on their ATVs, I can hear it when I'm sitting at my desk working. I can hear their conversations. So all of that dense foliage, whatever you want to call it, it's not blocking out the noise now. I can't imagine what it's going to be like after they cut down the trees. And I'll tell you, some of those conversations aren't very nice. I can see the buildings, they're home buildings now, too. The lights are bright, so the vegetation is low. It doesn't screen very much. It's going to look like, if this goes through, that you could land a lunar module, landing module on it. So why do we want to do this? There's really no need. But I thought you should hear it from somebody who lives across the street. I can hear and see everything already. So please vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak to this?
Sorry, I didn't get here in time to sign up.
No problem.
Thank you for hearing us. I'm Carol Carter. I don't live very close to the site, but I love Keene. I like the sleepy little post office there that's only open part-time and never has a line. I like the very popular vet who is there. And I don't really have any need for the state VDOT thing, but I think Keene is a charming, charming place. I'm very much opposed to this special use permit. This is a major disruption to the rural neighborhood. It causes major impact to the peaceful lifestyle of the residents. Please listen to those who live and work in this area. It is quite rural with frequent deer strikes, and last week, two cars hit a cow in the I also wonder why you would need to store a car for up to 30 days if you're bringing it in for an oil change, but that's another story. And then I will say that, as a postscript, with the advent of the popularity of low-maintenance electric vehicles, I hope this sort of business will eventually become unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else presently would like to speak to this? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay. With that, I'll go back to the applicant and ask, based on what you've heard from the public, is there anything you'd like to add to your presentation?
Taking notes, so I'm just going to address a few of the things I heard.
Sure.
I'll just rattle through a few of them. Won't take too much time. I think off the bat, we heard some things about zoning violations. I think that related to the issue of trust and things of that nature. It's my understanding that Tommy is not currently under violation of any zoning, is not being held for any zoning violations currently. I know Tommy's been working closely with the county, that was months ago, working with Lisa Green of the county, to clean up any zoning violations that there were. Currently, he's got a permit application in for the storage units that are on his parcel. It's also important to note, these are not the subject parcel. This is a parcel nearby, but it's not the subject parcel. But just felt like we should address that. Again, I'm hearing, you know, concerns about there being a tow truck depot there, kind of a bait and switch sort of thing. Again, we just want to reiterate the intent for the project, which is to be able to continue to utilize the Avon facility, which has been growing, kind of busting at the seams, to be able to split apart the bulk of the repair work for this location and continue to utilize the Avon site as a quote-unquote tow truck depot, given that that's much closer to the customer base anyway. Things such as noise and various screening and other kind of zoning violations, I guess, that we've heard. There's already zoning ordinances on the books to police things like noise violations and things like that. I think as we pointed out, the ordinance already dictates a pretty small use case for the public garage. Things like, the vehicles aren't screened, right? He would be in violation if you could see impounded vehicles, if you will, from the street, that that would be in violation with the code. We'd also like to offer up, in addition to the restriction that we offered, to add to the conditions of no after-hours towing in or out of the site. If there's a way, Cameron, to add a condition to limit or not disallow the lot as an impoundment, that is not the intent. This lot will not be used to bring in vehicles on an impoundment basis. Any impoundment activities will be taking place at the Avon facility. So we have no problem restricting that use in the conditions as well, if that would add additional clarity and narrow in the scope and try to provide some of that goodwill to the neighborhood that is suspicious.
Great. Thank you very much. Yeah, we have one follow-up question.
Sure.
What community engagement has occurred since March by the applicant? Since the last time you were here?
We've not had any official community meetings since March.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
All right. With that, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for a discussion. Who would like to kick us off? I will say one thing, though, if I could, and I think someone asked, this is not a direct response to a comment from the public, this is something I was planning to read, and I think it's helpful to read this every once in a while to remind ourselves, but also some that are before us. The purpose of the Alamo County Planning Commission is a public body established by the Board of Supervisors pursuant to Code of Virginia. The commission's primary role is to serve as an advisory body to the board to promote the orderly development of the county and its environs and to accomplish the planning, zoning and land subdivision and development objectives set forth in state law and the Alamo County Code. So I wanted to just remind everybody of that. And the second thing was, there was a comment, can't help myself, it's something to do with the care and intentional focus on the part of the planning commission and the county relative to the rural areas. And I just want to reiterate that that is an incredibly serious and focused point of conversation for us, and there are many opportunities for the public to provide process input during the comprehensive plan process. So just for the record. So with that, who would like to kick us off? Sure. I'll start. So I think, you know, we're going to be talking, particularly as the rural area plan comes up, you know, about what kind of uses are appropriate in the rural area. And there's some language, even the drafts, that we've seen so far that there does talk about, you know, small businesses and, you know, and various kinds of activities being allowed in the rural area. And I believe this constitutes a pretty good litmus test in my mind. Because for me, you know, staff had that statement about, does not support agricultural or forestal uses, but I think it's bigger than that. I think the question is, is the primary use of this facility to support the rural area? And I think we heard the applicant say himself, and you're hearing the citizens themselves say, that the primary use is not to support them, that the primary use is to support their Charlotteville business. And so from that standpoint, I couldn't support this because-
I couldn't support this because this is not primarily in support of the rural area and the objectives we've set forth for the rural area.
Mr. Moore?
I do have a, a question that'll probably eventually lead to a comment, but it's been referenced in a couple of comments and emails about a, a garage on Plank Road. I think the address is fourteen sixty seven Plank Road. And go, come on up zoning guys. Yeah, I don't see any information about a business being registered there or a garage operating there. And yet there's an awful lot of cars parked there and it's being referenced as a garage. And so I was just curious what's going on.
Good evening, Lisa Green, Manager of Co-Compliance. Indeed, you wouldn't find anything because that is an illegal garage. It is currently under violation and we are working that case.
Could you describe for me the, the process and sort of, oh, I don't know, the findings of fines? Or how, how does that go? How, how does that unfold with the, this kind of thing? Hypothetically, not necessarily this one.
So there's a process that's outlined by the state. We investigate, we work with an owner to see if they will come into compliance without further court action. Then we send notice and, or if, if an owner works with us, we don't, you know, we, we don't take them to court, but we send notice and then we follow a court process outlined by the state. And at that point, there are fines.
What, what comes next if compliance doesn't come voluntarily after that?
Court and then fines.
I don't know that, I mean, we had the following pictures submitted to us. I don't, I can't say when that was, was taken, but I know there's kind of some good. But yeah, that, and it was about, and this is not on the subject parcel.
Yeah, I was going to say it's adjacent.
But, but it, it does get to the, the point of community trust. And so I was wondering, can, can you say anything about the history of zoning violation of the property nearby?
On the Plank Road property?
I think Lonnie's actually asking, this was the, the applicant's other property.
Yeah, the applicant's other property, yes.
The, the applicant's home? Yes, they are in violation at this time. We had a violation last year that we investigated and worked with Mr. Shul right before the compliance was being. We had, we had a lot of cleanup that occurred on that property. And so things have moved back rapidly. And so we are now back out at Mr. Shul's home for compliance issues.
The reason I brought up the Plank Road one, and, and it's good to know it's being addressed. I think what I was, what I was concerned about is if there's this other out of compliance garage happening, but then we're, there's, you know, indications that at least one of us and probably several of us would not want to approve an actual approved garage. But if it's actually sort of actively known about and being addressed, that, that does alleviate my concern.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions for Ms. Green while she's up here? No? Okay. Good to go. Thanks.
I guess I'll just, I'll make a comment. This isn't an indication of how I'm voting or anything, but I just want to bring up that notion of like garages and conveniences and whether they belong in the rural area. I've brought this up before. I, I don't agree that a, a convenience use like a repair shop does not belong in the rural area unless it's servicing my tractor or my cattle. People live in the rural area too, and they actually do need services. And we talk about our other parts of the comp plan, looking at things like climate change and issues with, you know, emissions. The less driving to Charlottesville to get your car repaired, your oil change is not a, it, it's not a bad thing to not have to go really far every time we need to get something. That's why we have the convenience stores and frankly, we should have more of them. But that's neither here nor there. I just want to say that what I look to, the reason this is allowed by SUP, Special Use Permit, it's enumerated that it's allowed by SUP, it's not not allowed, is because in some, in the right situation, at the right scale, in the right location, it could be appropriate. We had another, um, this was a, there was another, um, project that was for a repair garage, garage, and it didn't actually end up coming to us on, and I don't know why. It was in the Batesville area, but it was a much smaller scale one, actually purporting to serve the same number of vehicles as tonight's application. But it was much smaller in scale. So what, where I'm looking at is what is the scale of this operation? And also what is the impact on the immediate neighbors? But I just, just want to put that out there that it doesn't have to be servicing someone's farm use to be appropriate in the rural area, can serve the residents who live there and provide some convenience. I don't expect a Wegmans to come to Keene. Okay, let's be clear. Every, all immediate needs of the rural area do not need to be, every resident does not need to be served in the rural area. But I think there are, I just, just want to say there are times when the scale of the use can be fitted into the rural fabric without a great deal of disruption. Is that the case with this one? That's what we need to wrestle with.
And I would say to plus one what you just said, but also add that without a great deal of disruption, but as you pointed out, with some benefit to, again, appropriately scaled and located.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
But I think that also, to clarify my comment, gets to the customer base. In, in the case of what you were talking about before, it was specifically to serve the needs of the local people. And it doesn't have to be fixing tractors, but something that specifically is serving the needs of the community versus something that seems to be a overflow of business from Charlottesville.
Well, that's his current, that's his current customers because of his current location. You couldn't, we can't assume that he won't then pick up new rural customers because of being located more conveniently in the southern part.
Mr. Carazana?
Yeah, I think just to follow up on Firehawk's scale question. I think that's where I'm struggling with when I compare this to, I mean, three to four cars a day. And that's just a comment that we heard. So there's several garages that I'm familiar with of that scale, and they're nowhere nears an acre in lot. When I was looking at that, even if you factor in turning radius for trucks, which I'm also very familiar with in recent projects that I've been working on, you can still get five times that parking, not six or seven times that parking if you get creative.
Yeah.
So I'm really struggling with understanding the scale of this particular application.
And if I may, just to add a little humor, I've been really experiencing the, the question of scale of repair shops as I've been getting my car towed around to various locations lately. It now has a, a non-passed inspection sticker and I'm still desperately trying to get it fixed. It's going to Scottsville tomorrow. But I've been really paying attention to parking lot size, level of cars that they can serve, hours of operation. And this, this is large, what we have before us tonight, compared even just a lot of, much smaller lots serving many more cars than what's here tonight.
Yeah, I'll throw out a couple of thoughts as well. So one, you know, at the beginning, I think there was, as I mentioned, there was a slide that showed the surrounding commercial uses or non-residential uses. And I think the point being that, look, there are a lot of these around there. There's also significant residential uses. So for me, one of them is, is it a, is it appropriate in the rural area? And is it appropriately scaled? And is it appropriately located within the rural area? And so that was another layer that kind of came into this. The other is if I'm doing my math right, and I know there's a teacher in the audience that's going to check down this, but you know, if you think about an eighteen by ten foot parking space and you add twelve feet by ten feet, you're at three hundred square feet for a parking plus travel way. And if you divide that by an acre, you're at about a hundred and forty parking spaces of asphalt with travel way. So it's a, to, to your point about scale and, and how this is scaled, I think that's a, a real struggle for me. I also just, you know, not to critique the plan itself, it's just an oddly shaped piece of asphalt. And I don't understand, you know, turning radiuses are not oddly shaped things. There's geometry to a site plan, that's the result of that. So I just can't get my head wrapped around the plan itself, the, and the level of, of asphalt that's there. Get it up here. You know, certainly, I, I want, I guess I, I do want to clear up one thing. I mean, we're, as I read at the beginning, we are here to talk about land use. We are not here to judge someone's character or talk about trust or those types of things. So if my comments were taken out of context, I apologize for that. But I do feel like there is some certainly strong weight and emphasis that comes from a public hearing. And that's what we're, it's the reason we have public hearings. So I have to believe the people that live in and around this property know more about this property than I do. So I take that pretty seriously as well. Let's see. Traffic impacts would be a concern for me as well, and especially in terms of access to Kohl's Rolling Road and the impact of the intersection at Route twenty. Those are my thoughts. I don't want to put you in a spot, but any other? Yeah?
Nothing, nothing that hasn't already been said. To be clear, I have no issue with a, a four bay garage in the rural area at all. It's more about the scale and there's something that's not coalescing with me, with the visual graphics that I see in the narrative. Something that's just not there, right? I take my car to N T B, right on Long Street, it looks nothing like that, right? So there, there is something missing with the, the site piece to it. It's a missing piece of the story that's just not there. So for that, I'm not able to support it in its current configuration, so.
All right, any other discussion? No? All right, hearing none. I'm happy to make a motion unless someone else would prefer to make a motion.
District, so I think it's appropriate.
Okay. Cameron, do you want to put the slide on? I can also read off the staff report if it's the same.
Give it one moment, they should be coming up on your screen. Here we go.
Great. All right, I move to recommend denial of S P twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six Shul property based on the many reasons stated this evening. Happy to go into detail on those if it's helpful, but happy to leave it at that as well.
We're allowed to.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, could we have the roll, please?
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
All right.
The Carazana?
Aye.
Sorry, short changed you there. Thank you. Thanks to the applicant, thanks to everybody who's come to speak on this subject. All right, we will move on to the next public hearing. Find it. Yeah, never, sure, let's think, we'll go take a recess, a five minute recess. Be back here, say at eight o'clock.
Seven minutes.
Seven minutes.
Are we live again?
Yes.
Great, thank you. It's beta eight oh one, I'll reconvene the November twelfth meeting of the Almarle County Planning Commission. I don't think I have to call the roll again, I think we're good, we have a forum. We're all still here.
Nobody rang.
That's right. And we are in the midst of the public hearing and I will move us on to ZMA twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, Archer North Development, and ask for the staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman Sol, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kevin McDermott, I'm the Deputy Director of Planning. And tonight I will be presenting the rezoning application for our ZMA twenty twenty-three dash fourteen Archer North redevelopment. And I just want to begin by saying I placed a, a document at each of your places. What you're looking at there is an update to the Affordable Housing Evaluation. The one that was in the packet was an older version that had a different unit count. So this one has the updated unit count that is proposed and, but has the same results of the assessment from our, our housing administrator.
Same percentage? Same percentage?
Uh, yeah, same percentage, the numbers, the unit count just changed. So the numbers changed.
Thanks.
A little bit. So as I said, this is the rezoning for the Archer North redevelopment. You can see on this aerial view that the outlined parcels are in yellow. Currently, those trailer homes that were on that property have been removed. There was a, a, an attachment in your packet that showed the current aerial view. You can see all those structures have gone at this point. Surrounding this area, it's bordered to the west by U S twenty-nine, to the south by Ashwood Boulevard. Also, the Brook Hill development is south of here extending off the screen. Forest Lakes Residential Development is to the east. And the area that is currently undeveloped on the north is where the Holly Hills development is proposed, which is currently in the site planned stage. The current zoning of this property is PRD, Planned Residential District. The proposal is to keep that zoned Planned Residential District, but it is necessary for them to do a rezoning in order to update the application plan. And I will get into the details of that. You can see the two tax map parcels that are being considered from this. Surrounding the property, the zoning includes resident, or rural areas across Highway twenty-nine. The south where Brook Hill is, you can see the neighborhood model development zoning. Planned unit development is surrounding it in the light green color. And you can see a few R one residential dis, zoning districts on some parcels just to the north of this property. The comp plan recommends urban density residential. That is for residential densities from six to thirty-four units per acre and does allow for other uses such as religious institutions, schools and small scale commercial office and retail. Additionally, surrounding this property, there's zoning, more zoning for urban density residential, neighborhood density residential in the yellow, as I mentioned, the rural areas to the west. And the green is private open space. And then that little blue area is institutional zoning, which encompasses a stormwater pond. And I will also add that the applicant is proposing to utilize that stormwater pond. There's not, there's a little discussion of that in the application narrative. However, there's nothing in the rezoning that would allow or prevent that from happening. That would be something that we would deal with in the site plan stage, but the applicant may speak more about that as we move, as they get to their presentation. The proposal for this includes a mix of single family attached multifamily condominiums and multifamily apartments. It's broken up into two phases. The first phase is this eastern portion down here, which actually is being developed under the by right zoning with seventy-eight units. That is currently in the site plan stage. The portion that is being redeveloped is Phase Two and includes two hundred and twenty-four units all in this area adjacent to twenty-nine. The density is fifteen point forty-eight units per acre gross and sixteen point two four units per acre net. So just sort of close to the middle midpoint of the recommendation in the comp plan. The affordable housing proposal here is for fifteen percent of the total units. Eight of those units will be in Phase One and the remainder in Phase Two. And they have also stated that there will be no cash and lieu option for that affordable housing. They will build that all on site. Some additional elements of the application plan, and just so you're aware, the application- just so you're aware, the application plan does become part of the rezonies. I mentioned, that's why they're in here today. So these are, they will be held to this during the site plan stage. Uh, transportation aspects of this include, uh, extending Archer Avenue north throughout the the property, and then it would connect to the Holly Hills development and be one of the primary access points for Holly Hills as well. Uh, there is a secondary public road that would connect from Archer North over to twenty-nine where there would be a right in, right out. Um, there's a ten foot shared use path. One already exists along twenty-nine and they are proposing one along Ashwood Boulevard in front of their property and then also along Archer Avenue North. Uh, they've also proposed future transit stops. There's a few locations shown on those and they will, uh, determine which ones, which of up to two will be utilized during the site plan stage and those would include shelters and benches. Uh, currently the area is not served by transit. However, um, these would be available if we ever are able to get fixed route transit up into that area. Uh, I will point out related to transportation that although this particular rezoning did not require a traffic impact analysis, there was a traffic impact analysis performed for the previous rezoning, which had some additional, more units than they're proposing now and found that there were no significant consequences to the development related to transportation. Uh, uh, I will also point out that the Holly Hills development did do a, uh, traffic impact analysis, which showed all the traffic going down Archer Avenue and connecting to Ashwood or a large portion of their traffic doing that and included the, uh, build out of the, of, uh, Archer North and once again did not show any significant impacts. There are open spaces and amenities as required shown throughout the site. Um, and then I just wanted to present this. So you had, um, the existing by right application plans. You understood what the differences are. So this is what was approved with the R S T development. You can once again see this is Ashwood Boulevard along the south side and twenty-nine going up here. These are all multifamily, uh, primarily apartment buildings. Uh, it a density a little bit greater than what they currently have at seventeen unit, seventeen point zero two units per acre gross density and seventeen point eight five units per acre net density. The affordable housing in this proposal included seventy-five percent of the tonne, total units for rent for those earning between thirty percent and eighty percent A M I. In this proposal, all the internal roadways were private. But they did include the ten foot shared use paths that are shown and also the future transit stops. The positive aspects of this is that the request is consistent with the uses and density recommendations in the place's twenty-nine master plan. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan neighborhood model principles and that neighborhood model principle analysis was in your packet as well. Uh, the request provides new public transportation improvements, including Archer Avenue, the new public road connecting to twenty-nine, multi-use paths and connections along twenty-nine and Ashwood Boulevard is, as well as throughout the development. Uh, the numbers and stor- and the number of stories and heights of the proposed buildings are more consistent with the character of the surrounding areas as well. The R S T development did allow, uh, buildings up to five stories in height in the central area. These would be, uh, up to four stories in height. Uh, the concern that staff found with this is that the approval of this request would reduce the number of required affordable housing units from one hundred and ninety-one approved under the R S T residences to forty-five affordable units proposed with this development. Overall, staff recommends approval of this E M A because of the pot, because the positive aspects outweighed the concerns. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Great staff report. Um, any questions from the commission?
So you said, uh, the first phase was in site plan review currently?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Can I have just a follow-up question to that? So that first phase in site plan review, review is not held to the percentage of affordable housing for that particular phase? In other words, we can't look at seventy-five percent affordable for that phase?
Uh, no, the, when they initially started building phase one under the R S T approval, the, uh, the affordable housing was intended to be in the future phases. So, um, there was no, for initially no affordable housing included in that. However, the applicant has gone back and said that they would provide up to eight units to reach that fifteen percent for the overall site.
Got it. Thank you. Questions? Yeah.
Just a couple of clarifying questions. Um, clarifying that the maximum number of units is three oh two because I, I read somewhere else it was two eighty. So just want to clarify.
Uh, yes, it's three oh two. Uh, uh, earlier, um, submittal was at two eighty and they have gone up since then to the three oh two.
Okay. And then one more clarifying question around the total number of units. Looks like it's, um, I'm sorry, affordable units. Like it's forty-five. But I saw on Dr. Pathy's report was forty-two. So just.
Uh, yeah, and I think that's what the update is that I provided.
Okay.
That.
So it is forty-five.
Forty-two was at the two eighty level and forty-five at the three oh two level.
Thanks.
Do you have some more? Uh, can you tell me more about where the affordable units will be? Uh, if phase one didn't include any, where, are they going to be all kind of clumped together here? What's going on?
Uh, no, sorry. The phase one initially wasn't going to have affordable units. However, they have gone back and uh, agreed to provide eight affordable units in phase one. So the rest to make up the, to the fifteen percent would be in phase two. Um, we, uh, have not seen exactly where they'll be. Uh, I think they do state that it would be, there would be a variety of of, uh, housing options throughout the overall site. Um, so there's going to be eight in this other one. You would assume if they go up to the full max, then the other, uh, thirty-seven would end up spread throughout the rest of the site.
Uh, I imagine it'll come up in the, uh, presentation that the applicant will, will provide, but I was just curious from a staff, why the, uh, proposal shifts so much with this, uh, in terms of the number of affordable units?
Um, I think that's something that the, uh, the applicant would have to speak to.
Thank you.
Robert?
Just one more question and, um, this might be more of a, probably a Dr. Pathy a question. I'll ask it just in case you know. Um, and her report says that we need two hundred and ninety-seven units per year, uh, to meet our, our housing goal by twenty forty, I want to say. And I'm just curious, do you know how we're tracking like this year in twenty twenty-four? I know it's more of her, her area of expertise, but I didn't know if that was something that was commonly known within the county. Like, are we coming closer to two ninety-seven this year?
Yeah, apologies. I am not aware of that, but we can look into that and, and get you that information for future reference.
Good to have.
Yeah, it would be. Thank you.
Right. Any other questions? Right. Um. Can, I just had one question. I don't know if you know this or not, but do you know how many? I guess their trailers were on the site that have been demoed originally?
Uh, I don't have a specific number, but my recollection, it was, uh, between sixty and seventy trailers at the time.
Sixty. Great. Thank you. All right. Uh, with that, I will open up the public hearing and ask for the applicant's report, please.
Spend a minute and just get this pulled up. All right. Good evening, everyone. Great to see you and, um, thank you to staff for a wonderful report. Uh, my name's Ashley Davies with Riverbend Development. We are the applicant. I'm here tonight along with Alan Taylor of Riverbend Development, Scott Collins of Collins Engineering and Chris Schooly of Greenwood Homes, who will be our home builder uh, for the property. And, um, on this first slide here, you can see um, some of our other communities that are going up and being built by Greenwood Homes. And, um, yeah, I think a big focus tonight is obviously housing. It's coming up a lot in your comprehensive plan. I heard it in, um, you know, speakers of the public matters earlier. And, um, we're very proud to come before you often and to be creating new neighborhoods in Albemarle County to try to, um, counteract the big issues that we have right now, um, with housing shortages. Um, as Kevin pointed out, um, the location of this site, I think is really, um, interesting, the way it's nestled in between the existing neighborhood of Forest Lakes South, uh, the up and coming neighborhood of Brook Hill that's under construction right now. And then the future Holly Hills. Um, when I first walked in tonight, um, as an applicant, I was a little nervous to see so many people in the audience. Usually that's, uh, not, not a, a great sign. Um, but then I looked at the signup sheet and noticed that they were all for the, the other item or so. Uh, whoosh, but, um, I, I think that really speaks to how we operate as a company and, um, since we, um, took on Archer North, we have met a lot with the Forest Lakes H O A and board members. We try to be very transparent and collaborative, um, as we design any neighborhood and understanding that it really is, um, the front door to that existing community and a gateway to kind of all of these neighborhoods. So, um, we have spent a lot of time working with them and making sure that we're bringing a really high quality product to the neighborhood that is really consistent with what you're going to see, um, next door to it with the Ashland Townhomes and, um, yeah, not inconsistent. So that's really important to us. Um, and I, I just also want to note, I mean, I hope that each of you have been able to drive through the Brook Hill neighborhood. There's been a lot of construction activity and that neighborhood's really coming together. But, um, I, I like to look at this as an overall tapestry because you see that down in Brook Hill, um, we do already have, um, a lot of the apartment buildings, uh, constructed. There's senior living. Um, there's multiple types of residences at different price points and then we'll have the town center starting, uh, construction soon as well as additional apartments that do all really qualify at an affordable level. Um, and yeah, I, I wanted to just go back to our application plan and feel free to ask me any clarifying questions, but um, yes, so there is a two phased approach to the Archer North neighborhood. The phase one, um, we felt like it was actually pretty consistent with what we would have designed and built anyways. Um, with the amenity spaces and the unit types. So we did just keep that in place, but with the previous rezoning, um, there was no affordability shown in that area and we did want it to be. Um, not only do we want to build the affordable units, but we wanted it to be, um, kind of spaced throughout the neighborhood. So we did go ahead and just re-insert affordability into that phase two, so that phase as well. So it wouldn't all be in the upcoming phase. Um, so we thought that was really important. Um, I also think our new plan, not only does it provide, um, the much needed public roads, uh, with Archer Avenue as well as the public road going out to twenty-nine north, which I think sets up um, a really great network in that area for connecting neighborhoods. But I think we also have better amenity spaces that are evenly spaced throughout the development and, um, we're providing forty percent open space. So we have taken the approach, um, our sister company Greenwood Homes, um, i- is doing really well in Albemarle County. And we've taken the approach that, um, we do want to address housing in Albemarle. But, um, we feel that it's really important, um, in some of our other developments like Brook Hill, we're providing a lot of affordability, affordability through the apartment complexes down there. But we also think that for sale affordable units are an important factor in, um, solving issues in Albemarle County too. And we don't see that other places are really bringing that to bear in the marketplace. So um, we have taken the approach. It's, it is very different from what you saw with R S T, but, um, we are um, providing all for sale product. And so, um, we're actually really proud that we're going to be building the units and we have, um, just a great marketing team and, um, amount of people that, um, come across the Greenwood site that we think we will be able to sell these very easily and actually, um, you know, assist that part of the problem in the county. So I think it's just not, there's not just a single approach to that. So we're happy about that. And um, I do also just want to focus on, I, I work on affordable housing every day and I think there's um, a big reason why the, the previous rezoning didn't come to fruition. And, um, once you get into those deeper levels of affordability and providing seventy-five percent affordable, that does really take you into the realm of tax credits. And, um, for many of the tax credit deals that I've worked on, they're all with either nonprofits or semi-governmental entities like the Housing Authority. And when you get into that realm, you really almost need the nonprofit or semi-governmental status because you have to access so many different layers of capital. And even with the ability to go after those just different subsidies that Sunshine referenced earlier, you still come up, I mean, it can be up to a ten million dollar gap in the funding. So, um, you know, my sense is that that last rezoning got it into the tax credit realm and it just wasn't going to happen because of a variety of things, the level of competition for credits, the cost of, um, construction, the subsidies needed. So um, I think that from, you know, from your side of the table, that's tough because, um, I know you would like to have seen that happen. But, um, yeah, I just don't think it's a reality in this marketplace. So, um, we're happy to kind of pivot and really create a great neighborhood here that actually has for sale opportunities that are in alignment and harmonious with the surrounding areas. Um, I know Scott wanted to speak for a minute about stormwater management. We don't have a lot of time yet, but maybe you can also ask him a question about that if he wants some more information.
Uh, thank you, uh, Scott Collins with Collins Engineering. Um, want to talk a brief minute about stormwater, about our stormwater management approach on this piece of property. Um, it's a little unique, but, um, it's something we've done on two different sites currently. One was the, um, well, when we first talked about, so when V dot did all their improvements up and down twenty-nine and on Burke Moore Drive, when they built that, they built these, uh, beautiful uh, storm management facilities and enclosed them with chain link fence. So they never had to worry about them again. Um, we all seen them and drive by them all the time. And so we took that as it's more of a challenge because on the Burke Hill property that one of those facilities was on our, on the Burke Hill site. And so we looked at that as an opportunity to incorporate that pond into the overall development, enhance the facility, landscape it, put more decorative fence and really make it part of the development. And that worked out great. It's in functional now. And it's, um, and it looks great. You can hardly tell it's there. We're doing the same thing with Holly Hills with that development. There's a pond on that one. We've sort of incorporated that into the overall development. We're going to enhance it, use it for stormwater management, not only for the site, but still for the V dot roadway and make it a better facility and sort of let it blend in as well to the community. So there's a third pond that's on the county property. Same thing. It's an existing pond. Um, chain link fence doesn't get maintained, doesn't get a much love at all. It looks like you can tell every time you drive by it. So our thoughts are to send our storm management over to let me keep.
Yeah, if you can, you can turn off the alarm. Thanks. If you want to just wrap it up with your.
Yeah, right. Our, our thoughts are to basically take that facility and incorporate that, um, with some, with storm management from our site as opposed to putting underground pipes and storing it and just let it release in it, not getting a whole lot of water quality from that at all. Sort of take that existing pond, enhance it, make it more of a facility, get more of the more drainage to it. Cause a lot of times those facilities are overdesigned with V dots. So it has a lot of, it still has a lot of adequate capacity, which we found. And sort of incorporate it to landscaping and maintenance and take all that maintenance with our development and handle the storm. And handle the stormwater management, which would be great as opposed to trying to put it all underneath the ground and buy nutrient credits, which is sort of the easy button, but.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks. Let's open it up for questions from the commission. Sounds like Commissioner Murray has a question.
Yeah, so is that a wet pond or a dry pond?
Wet pond.
Okay, so, so, so that's great. I assume you'll be planting it with natives like. I, I always thought it's a lost opportunity really, you know, because you have so many great native plants like American lotus or, you know, swamp rose. Hibiscus. So, I mean. Love to see what you do with it.
Yeah, absolutely. Such a great opportunity to do that.
Any other questions for the applicant?
You can go.
Question more?
Probably less about. Stormwater runoff and more about the affordable housing parts. I'm, I am curious. I mean, I do understand there's a lot of complex factors and multiple layers of capital they have to go into. You know, deeply affordable or seventy-five percent affordable units. It can be a tough nut to crack. I was wondering if you could tell me a little bit more about Riverbend's experience and role with the Crescent Hall project and the public housing projects in the city.
Sure. So that's actually what I work on on a daily basis and. Guess it was about six years ago, we became the pro bono development partner of the Housing Authority and working to bring those projects to fruition and those are all resident led. Redevelopments, but in order. To. Be successful in those projects, it required. A lot of private donations and a lot of match grant fund, grant funding from the city and. When I say a lot, you know, that's like basically like putting in ten million extra dollars. To the development on top of all the other funding sources from Virginia Housing. E H C D, like you have a capital stack that's just really. Complex and even then it's hard to pull off. So. I just, you know, I bring that up because I think it speaks to why. You may not see as many private developers being able to pull off deeply affordable housing and. Quite frankly, since we started this work, it's become a lot more competitive. There are a lot more people going after the tax credits. On a statewide basis. So it's harder to get them. Sometimes, you know, it. The amounts change from year to year, what's available. And also we have a lot of local groups. Beyond the Housing Authority, PHA, that they do tend to go after that funding as well. So. And they've, you know, we've been very successful here in Charlottesville, but. There are a limited number of credits available. So. It's just, it's, it's very difficult to pull off.
I definitely, every one I've talked to who has even touched those projects tells me it's very difficult. I was just sort of asking that because it, from what I've read and understand, you do have connections with nonprofit developers and potentially could go after some of those. Or are in a better position than so than, than, you know, some of the others that, that passed through here. So I was just. Wanted to find out, I guess, more about when and how the decision was made that we can't put that shoulder to the wheel on this one.
Yeah, well, I would say that the work we're doing in affordable housing, we actually have. Multiple phases that are, you know. Basically stacked up for, I'd say at least the next decade, adding. You know, anywhere up to, I'd say five to six hundred beyond the existing Housing Authority stock. We've also got hundreds of new additional units coming online throughout Charlottesville. So. You know, we are creating those units. It's just not at this particular site. It didn't make sense here.
And then I also wanted to see if your company had, had given any consideration to voluntarily opting into the twenty percent. Under the new ordinance, twenty percent affordability with sort of a property tax credit. As part of the. Making up the difference.
Yeah, thus far we were just working under the policy that's in place when we applied, just like any of the other zonings that we had put in. At that time and like I said, we really want to focus on home ownership here and. I also think, you know, it's important to note that. With our site plan approval being pretty imminent on phase one, we'll start construction on. The first round of affordable units early in twenty twenty-five. Those will be. Available for sale by the end of the year and. I just say that because I think it's so important that we start constructing now or as soon as possible because the project. Sorry, the problem keeps compounding upon itself and I think that that's where Greenwood has a real strength. And that as a project team that we kind of have a soup to nuts and we can actually. Deploy these units, get them on the ground and have a beautiful new neighborhood. In place whereas, you know, the previous rezoning got approved and it just sat like they really just couldn't do anything with it. So they had to. Unload it and now here we are kind of back. Back in front of you. And so I think, I think we have a really exciting opportunity here to build a new neighborhood. With for sale affordable units that we will get people into their new homes.
Yeah, and I, Greece, I know I'm popping the mic, I'm sorry. No, I very much agree about the need to. Some of my colleagues have heard me refer to affordable housing around here as an emergency level. So I hear that and also hearing what Sunshine was saying earlier about one of the things is simply increasing the supply. So. Going from there being no housing there now, although there were sixty or seven before, but sixty or seventy, but. But yeah, so I, I get that. And the last question I've got then, and it's related. And it does something we've heard on this commission before is that oftentimes when affordable housing developments. Come online and are ready for sale, I don't recall the percentage now, but you all remember the report we got that so many of them. Don't get sold within this like ninety day window that, that, that is available. And so I, I wanted to see if you had plans to, like what your plans were to ensure that they all get sold at that affordable level and don't just roll over into market rate.
Absolutely. As someone, like I said, who works on affordable housing every day, I've. Often been like pretty disgusted by that policy that it doesn't result in getting people into units. And I think. That that's also where, like I said, I think Greenwood is unique in their ability. They have so many units coming online and so many people interested in buying their units. That they have just like such a wide variety of people. That they're communicating with and marketing to and just our company ethos is like, we want these to be. Remain affordable. So I think that, you know, we're certainly not the ones trying to be like, oh, it's ninety days, like let's take it off. Like we. Are absolutely committed to getting those units as affordable and getting families into them. I don't know, Chris, if you. Wanted to speak to that at all, you don't have to, but. I just, as someone who was recently looking for a house in Albemarle County and. I actually got to interact with their company and their website from a different side of the table and I think that they. Are really, really helpful in getting people into houses and. Yeah, so I think we're, you know, we're absolutely committed to that. I don't know if anything's come up in your conversations about. How to make that a better reality, but. Yeah, we, we have the, the tools and the marketing to, to get the word out to the people who are looking.
It's coming up.
Sure.
Thanks. I'm Chris Scully with Greenwood Homes. I was just doing some quick math. I was thinking about back there because you mentioned the two hundred and ninety-seven units. In twenty twenty-five, we're going to deliver over a hundred eighty U's. It's thirty-four in the city and the rest would be in the county and that's split between Glenbrook and Crozay. Hopefully this project, we have a South First Street project right downtown. Belvedere has sixteen units, Victoria Heights has eight. So when you add all that up, we're, we're kind of the ones in the market that are delivering the ADUs. I think we're happy in this situation because they're for sale units. A couple of other places, we're building them and we're doing the rental program. We like to have a diversity of our product types. The lower units, especially for the two over one unit is a, is a nice sized two bedroom apartment. But also we have the two over two units, which is a two floor with a garage. That would also be affordable in a couple of our neighborhoods and we have a sixteen foot wide townhouse. So you like a broad range of, of, of all types of products. And all of our products, including the ADUs would meet our same sustainability criteria. So. I don't know if Ashley's going to go into any of that, but every Greenwood home meets the same criteria. So.
Thank you.
For the interest of time, because I think a lot of folks are probably going to ask questions about the affordable components. Maybe we can stay on that theme for a little bit. Because I, if I could just keep going a little bit, I'd do a little bit deeper dive. So. You mentioned the question of the term of affordability. And you didn't really address that specifically. You said, you know, we definitely want. The for sale, which is great, you know, building wealth, it's all great. I'm sure knowing that we're not the final say here, that you're going to go to the board of supervisors and they have some very strong feelings about affordable housing. That you're prepared to think through some alternatives, some ways to actually. Do better than sort of the basic minimums. So one of them is for sale. How long are you thinking that those would be? Afford or considered affordable? So once I buy a for sale. Affordable unit, can I sell it next year for a market rate? What's to prevent me from doing that? Do you have any stopgaps in place to allow that or provide that?
Well, we are thinking about ways to work through that internally because I know that that can be an issue that's out there that it. It's wealth building, but just for one person for a very short time. So. I think that there are ways that we could handle that through deed restriction for a certain number, number of years. And also just started conversations with the Community Land Trust to. Gauge their level of interest and potentially. You know, they could potentially buy however many of the units that they want and keep them. Under their, you know, portfolio of units. So they would stay. Affordable indefinitely in that instance. So we are trying to think creatively about how you. Crack that.
Retain that.
Because I, I think that's an important element. So I think there's a variety of ways that we could handle that.
So I, I should know this. I know it for re, for rental, but the new housing Albemarle policy is rental is for thirty years. Does anybody know what? For sale is? Is it ten? That it has to be retained on, as an affordable level? Nobody knows? Okay, only applies to rental? Okay.
Yeah, sometimes people have the right of first refusal if you're a nonprofit housing provider.
Yeah.
And then they have to come back to you. That's usually the way it's done. They wouldn't necessarily be set up to do that.
Looking at staff to see they're all looking at each other. The other question is where are the affordable homes located? Oh, sorry, not the affordable homes, but the for sale homes on the plan.
So just to be clear, everything is a for sale product throughout the whole neighborhood. It's not set up to be.
No rental.
Rental units.
Got it.
And then, yeah, the affordable will be. There's some of them kind of in the middle area here as well as, gosh, this is very tight.
Just dispersed throughout?
It's dispersed throughout. There's some in these two over ones here, two over ones there, some in the middle. Yeah, it's really kind of. Throughout the site.
Got it. And I, I'm sorry, I just have one other question and then I'll. Just question back again to Commissioner Moore's question, partnerships. So I know you are part of a lot of partnerships and there are partnerships that can help with the gap. You kept throwing out ten million dollars. It's whatever that gap is, right? Could be less, could be more depending on the scale of the project. Did you look at, I think you answered, didn't make sense here. Did you look at partnering with other nonprofits potentially to bring a higher level of affordability here?
Thus far now, we've taken this on as a Greenwood Homes development. We felt like this was the best place for that type of neighborhood here. Yeah.
Got it. But maybe not the best way to increase the affordable levels, right?
Well. I don't know. I mean, I think quite honestly, what was proposed in the previous rezoning was unreasonable.
Sure.
Unfortunately.
Seventy-five percent.
And so it's kind of set a weird precedent that is attached to this. Property versus, you know, anything else that's coming across. Your desk and, you know, that's something that we're all kind of working through as a group right now. But yeah, I think like Chris said, we are very in favor of providing affordable. We're doing it all over the county, probably more so. Than any developer or home builder. Out there. So we're always looking for creative solutions and suggestions and. We obviously, you know, we're in compliance with the policy, but we're always. Open to, you know, ideas and conversation about what you want to see here.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna just go back to this whole affordability question again. And, and just a quick comment. I mean, there are other ways to make things affordable, like buying down the, the housing price. Affordable housing providers have done that where. They lop twenty or thirty thousand dollars off the top of the price. I had a house like that once. I, I, I'm just, I need you, if you would. And this can be a challenge, but can you please just give us an abbreviated timeline? Because it's, I'm having trouble. I understand you're saying it's hard to afford to create all these. Affordable housing units. You don't want to do rentals. You want to do for sale instead. You know, can you just give a timeline? So like if I was a member of the public watching this, I would not understand. How we got from the first proposal to this scenario. So could you just provide that? Like you, you have the property now and you can't afford to do it under the zoning. That it currently has what was proper before. Can you just give us a quick timeline to explain how we got to today?
Sure. I mean, I think a basic line of events is the property. Was rezoned under another applicant. And following the rezoning. The applicant realized that they weren't going to be able to proceed with that development. Because of a variety of factors and that's what I was going into. I think. It's because they rezoned it in a way that it has to be a tax credit deal and. Over the course. Of time where that, when that was happening, you also had rising interest rates, construction prices going up. Availability of tax credits going down. So just a whole host of things that made that untenable for the previous. Applicant. So at that point, they put the property. On the market because they weren't going to proceed with it. And that's when we started looking at the property and spending a lot of times with the Forest Lakes neighborhood, trying to understand. Okay, what actually makes sense here? What is harmonious with the surrounding areas? What can we bring to the market that would be really valuable and, and actually viable in this area? And. Yeah, I just think that that's a key point. So we did pivot at that point to be like. All right, we're going to look at it and see what would make sense as more kind of neighborhood for sale product that seemed to be. Much more in keeping with the surrounding area and. Also, I think just a good compliment to everything that we're providing at Brookhill where we have. A huge number of affordable rentals available. I mean, there's hundreds of them there. So. This just provides a variety of housing types.
I think that's very helpful and I think it's a good way to encapsulate everything. Otherwise you're relying on everyone knowing, I remember this piece and I remember that.
I remember that.
That would might be helpful for the board too. And then I guess just. Just a, a comment maybe because I'm not going to ask you to revise your application or anything at this late date, which I can't. But, you know, and you said keeping it in character with the surrounding area, like as a county, we're trying to densify the urban ring. So. We're actually trying to push stories taller, buildings taller with more stories. So it's not, it's actually not attractive to me to hear that we're going to keep it to four, you know? When you, I'd rather see you go up and maybe put, you know, affordable condos on the first floor or something like that. Now, I know when you build a taller building. Then you get into elevators and other things that become more expensive and people don't want to do that. And you can't do stick built and, or whatever the other issues are, but. I, I want to see, and everyone on this dais wants to see more density. And taller buildings if that's what it takes. I do like the extra green space you managed to squeeze in there. I think that's great. I think the stormwater management. I think that's great. I think the stormwater management could go even farther. You could have permeable pavement. You don't even need that big stormwater pond necessarily. So I think you could be a lot greener in those components, if you really want to push that. But I, I do, what's helpful to have that sort of history encapsulation. I do understand about the housing market and the prices of construction and inflation and mortgage rates. It's all pretty terrible time to be in a development scenario. So I know you're doing the best you can. But it was just helpful to have that kind of laid out.
It is challenging and I hope everyone remembers what Ms. Firehawk said when we come back in a few months for Brookhill where we are adding 300 additional units to the heart of that town center. So. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions for the applicant? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Davy. It's been a, a, a rich conversation on affordable housing. I think we're so used to seeing rentals that I'm not used to seeing the for sale product. And so just wondering, what is the price range? Just to kind of set some context as we're having conversations around comp planning and so forth. For affordable housing, for sale unit? What is that price range that we're kind of looking at? You know, high, low?
Five bedrooms?
Um, yeah, yeah.
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
So the, the county max for our development would be $308,000 is the maximum for sale affordable price, but depending on the unit type and size, it'll definitely, you know, go down from there.
But 308 was a high point.
That's the highest it would be.
Right. And are you able to share what some of the proposed recreational amenities are? They look good on the plan, but are you able to go into any more detail or?
We're, we're working through that right now. We have a great landscape architect on Scott's team and you may know more about what Chuck has come up with, but since we do have so many options, I know there's one area that's more of a dog park. There's going to be certain areas that'll probably be more playground focused, fire pit, but do you have other? Anything else you want to add, Scott?
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, thank you. Um, basically they're kind of looking at incorporating a number of different recreational amenities. They're even looking at pickleball court on one of them. It's like pretty kind of cool. And that is like this development would also would also sort of tie in with the Brookhill HOA and be all one conglomerate HOA, which does, which then in turn would give them ability to use Brookhill amenities as well, which would be great. And vice versa. So we do build some courts up here along with some playgrounds like dog park, a couple of pavilions. It all sort of kind of works together and creates a, a community, more of a community between with a lot, with a lot of different amenities. Cause obviously Brookhill has a, has a pool coming online, clubhouse, has some, some bigger recreational areas, also has a pickleball court or sports court that they just got, that just got constructed not too long ago. But yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the applicant? No? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, I will ask if there are any members from the public who would like to speak to this. All right. Seeing none, any members of the public online?
Not at this time.
All right. Great. You have, you can come up and speak to the public comments if you'd like. If not, that's fine. All right. So with that, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the commission for conversation.
Where's your first staff?
Yeah.
So can can you remind us of the process for for sale units? It, I'm assuming it doesn't fall all on the developer to, to, because I know there was a website and there was being updated and there was some updates to that. It's, I'm trying to understand how that works because certainly we have 90 days. After 90 days, it goes to full market value. And I understand the county has a process for that.
Sorry, I, I don't actually know the process for the housing. I don't know if I don't think we have the appropriate staff to be able to answer that question. I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll keep that open for another day. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else discussion? Sir?
I'd be to share some comments. It's a beautiful project. I mean, there's no question about it. I have to admit, I was very excited at first around the affordable housing aspect and figure it's probably too good to be true. So we're back to reality now. But I'm just waiting for an opportunity to be able to lift up a, a project as like a best practice. And it feels like we can just never get it. I, I'm in support of this, but can we push the envelope and go for the 20% like in the new policy, like just we keep getting the run of the mill. And this one was just more disappointing because it was such a pushing the envelope. It was so innovative, right? And understanding that the finances just don't work. So you can't do that. But, um, I'm really scared about the, the 90 day turnaround period. I, I just don't there's not a good track record of that being successful. Doesn't seem like whenever we hear Dr. Pathia talk to us about that, seems like they all go to waste. And so what is this really solving in affordable housing space? And I know the, so the team will be committed to trying to get things turned around, but it's not really their job until 90 days, as it seemed like. So.
Yeah. I mean, I think it would be great to actually get an update on that. I know we're talked about when we are doing the AC44 housing, but maybe before that, we can get an update on what, where are we with our housing stock and have we made some progress in, in this website and marketing? Cause my understanding it is not supposed to be solely in the hands of the other developers. In fact, some developers say it's most kind of hands off and it goes to the, to the county to to market and put in their websites. So.
We should do this and we should do this before we have our housing discussion. Let me, I've got actually a email out to Stacy, Athia, talk about another project and she's out this week. But I will talk to her next week and we need to come back and talk to you about this.
Good.
I just couldn't mention, I mean, I know the reason, part of the reason was this mismatch of not having a place where a person who wanted to buy an affordable house could find out that so and so development was offering them. And that the county had used to have a person whose job was to play matchmaker and they ended that position. Then we fought hard to get it back. And then finally we got Stacy, but you know, we have the website, but I don't, I don't know how well it's working. And that's, that's the problem is like, did we solve it? Did we solve that lack of awareness on the, on behalf of home seekers? That it's there? Wait, that's why it's so nice to have a nonprofit housing provider because they have the clientele. There being the matchmaker. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. So the thing that just strikes me is that, so there, there were mobile homes here and you know, I mean, that was our, our starting point. And so th- those are certainly affordable. And we don't really have a zoning per se to allow mobile homes to stay mobile homes. So, you know, these places get inverted. And so whatever happens here is going to be, I mean, it's, I, I'm not, I'm pretty sure that no one's paying, you know, $300,000 for, for their mobile home. So, um, you know, that, that's, that's a concern, like where we started and where we're ending up. And I don't know, I don't know how you.
Right. Which was part of the rationale of approving the mobile home being transitioned into
Well, that's
This rental project.
Exactly.
So how many, I guess that would be really something worth knowing is well, first of all, probably no one in that mobile home park could afford the for sale units here. So there's zero
Yeah.
likelihood that anyone could come back.
It's a net loss, not only to the affordable housing stock, but it's also, I mean, people are probably unhoused because of removing the mobile homes.
Yeah. They said they were going to work on helping them relocate, but we didn't get a report. I have no idea.
Yeah, I agree.
That was.
I think it's possible that the application would potentially be looked at differently. If this were the first thing out of the gate as opposed to the one that was 75%. It feels a little bit like boiling a frog. Slowly kind of getting, oh, okay. Now it's 15 was 75, but it's still okay. It's 15. I don't know. Just.
Mr. Chairman, I thought the first time this came to force, I thought Habitat for Humanity was here and maybe spoke on it. I'm not sure if there's still a player. I'm not sure if the applicant would like to speak to that, but seems like they're probably not a player. They're not here tonight. So I think that answers the question, but that starts to talk to that, that piece about connecting folks and things like that. But no, very good points. It's totally lost that.
Yeah. I mean, you know, all due respect to the applicant who's doing great work in the community. There's no question. I, I will just say this, one is there's, you know, complies with the appropriate housing policy. And I put myself in your shoes, right? Cause I've been there and in some cases am there. Or as, as you think about preparing for the board of supervisors, I don't have to share any wisdom with you all, but I would really seriously, and this will go in the record, think about if there's a way to get to 20% for a longer period of time and have that in your back pocket when you go to the board, because I think it's going to be a tough sale.
Yeah, we're not getting, we're not, not getting what we thought. And it's not the minute.
Yeah. And the, the challenging thing is, sorry, I'll be in discussion, not talk to you all, but um, I think the challenging thing is this is an incredibly capable group who've done great work and can set an example for other developers in the area. And that's a good thing for them and it's a challenging thing for them, right? Cause it puts them in that position. But I think that would be time well spent if there were a way to look at partnerships, if there are a way to think about ways to even increase that percentage and bring that when it comes back to the board. Any more discussion? An entertaining motion?
My districts, I'm happy to make one. Those are really good points. I actually forgot about the displacement of the mobile homes. That, that was 60 units, right?
Yeah, 60 or 70.
Yeah, it's disappointing. Um, yeah, I'll, if you can put the motions up. Okay. I move to recommend approval of the zoning map amendment ZMA 2023 triple zero 14 Archer North Development. For the reasons stated in the staff report, and I would like to make sure there's notes that Chair Missile have provided or appended to that, if this passes and goes forward. So.
Second? A reluctant second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion? The only thing I would say in discussion is, you know, we talk a lot about incentives. What it would take to increase the affordability levels in Albemarle County. And as a, you know, un- under the best situation, most collaborative efforts resulted in something that's not enough. So if there are things that can be said to the board of supervisors that will help them understand ways that developers could look at potentially increasing affordability, probably heard it before a million times. I think it would be good information to share with them because you all clearly haven't been able to make this work. And the 75% was untenable. So if we're going to keep doing this as a county, we're losing affordable housing. It's, it's just, it's a shame really. But all right.
And just to beat the horse a little more, I just, I just do want to say, if, if this had been the proposal that came to us directly, this one to replace the, the trailer park, I wouldn't have voted for it. Because it was, it's not fair. It's not equitable to what we were promised. And I understand there are the inheritors, not the original proposers. But it, it, it just leaves a sour taste in my mouth. And notwithstanding all the other good work that you do in the community for affordable housing. I just, I wouldn't have, you know, I, I'm kind of reluctantly in support.
Yeah. I'm in the same boat and it's my district.
Yeah, it's a, one of those where now today it's build nothing versus build this with 15%, but kind of like what you said. Yeah. Yeah.
All right. We had any more discussion? All right. We have a motion and a second. We have the roll, please.
Mr. Carrizano?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Clayborne?
Aye.
Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you all. All right. With that, we are moving on to committee reports. Are there any commissioners with committee reports? No? All right.
Well, you know, I will give one actually very briefly, although it's not an official committee of the, the plant commission, the natural heritage committee did meet. And we got a sneak peek at the environmental section of the comp plan. Which I, I'm, I'm very excited and encouraged by a lot of the, the things that I saw in there. And I, I can't wait until it's four so we can all discuss it together.
Awesome. All right. Review the board of supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So two meetings since the last time we met. One was on October 30th. That was the all CAC meeting, the AC44 thing. But you were there. So I think you can speak well to that. The other meeting was this past week on the sixth. Uh, we went and spoke to the board about AC44, the development land use policy. I think you heard some of those comments being reflected back at you this evening. Uh, we also had two other items that had come for you before. The first was Our Lady of Peace, which was the assisted living facility off of Hillsdale. And that was passed. The other was the Night Berkshire proposal, which was off Berkmar. I think it's the road that goes over the Lowe's and it's late evening. I think it was Woodbrook, Woodburn, whatever that street comes up and dead ends.
Yeah.
Um, that was also passed, but interestingly.
Had a connecting path, I think to an adjoining property or, or to.
Interestingly enough, I was just getting ready to touch on that. When it came before you all, we we talked about the, the desire to have that path and the school system said that they didn't look for the path. Um, apparently once it went to the board, supervisors felt that it should have the path. So the path was um, put back into the proposal.
Okay.
And it passed. Great. Um, as far as AC44, I think we talked about that. We'll be back next week. Uh, at 6:00 PM. I'm going to send out, I need to just double check all the invites that have been sent to you all. Make sure we get the times. I'm probably going to send you another calendar. Just to make sure we're squared away on all the times and, and I'll do that, uh, the first thing tomorrow. We'll get that done.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Any new business? Very tired. Any items for follow-up? All right. Well, I will adjourn this planning commission. The next meeting will be held Tuesday, November 19th, beginning at 6:00 PM. Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.
Thank you.